And Mr. Timniak, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, then, starting from the top with item three. We have a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th, 2019.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments or edits?
No.
No, we're all set.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 4th, 2019?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments on that?
No. All set.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up is an appointment to the Ethics Commission to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment to the Ethics Commission. This requires unanimous Board of Selectment approval and RTM approval. Francis L. O'Reilly, Republican, 869 Valley Road, for a term of 719 to 721, and this is to fill a vacancy for Janice Carpenter, whose term expired. May I motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm excited Frank agreed to go on the Ethics Commission. He's very well qualified.
Yeah, I'm happy, just so you know, I believe he's on vacation, couldn't be here today.
Yeah, but we know him because he's been on other boards and commissions, so he's well-known to folks. I'm thrilled that he's stepping up and he becomes the fourth member of Ethics Commission, which now means we have a functioning Ethics Commission again. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, back to the board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Sheila, please make a note that we will inform Mr. Riley, or O'Reilly, sorry, that he was voted in and he needs to get to the appropriate RTM meeting. We're trying to get him to Monday's meeting, so if you could make a note that we let him know ASAP.
Yes, I will.
Next up, item five, from the Director of Public Works, and this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that a bond resolution entitled, "A Resolution Amending and Restating a Resolution Entitled 'A Resolution Appropriating $3,888,000 For The Costs Associated With The Construction Of A Berm and Pumping Station and Authorizing Issue Of Bonds To Finance Such Appropriation' To Increase The Amount Of The Appropriation Bond Authorization To $7,419,265B," and hereby is adopted. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Now, there are two resolutions that I think are around the same issue. Is Mr. Mayor here? All right. Who's going to step this up? My question is, should the board put both these motions, if it's okay with my colleagues, on the table at the same time, so we can talk to both of them?
You can. Basically, I don't know what the order is on the agenda. Yeah, so the first motion is whether you're going to approve the funds, and the second motion is sources funds.
I'll, thank you, I'll leave it to... Board, want to take these one at a time or both together?
We'll take them both together.
All right, then, may I have a motion to put the next item on to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Whereas the town of Fairfield, the town has adopted at the request of the Water Pollution Control Authority, "A Resolution Entitled 'A Resolution Amending and Restating A Resolution Entitled 'A Resolution Appropriating $3,888,000 For The Costs Associated With The Construction Of A Berm and Pumping Station and Authorizing The Issuance Of Bonds To Finance Such Appropriation' To Increase That Amount To The Appropriation Bond Authorization Of $7,419,265." And whereas the amended resolution appropriates $7,419,265 for costs associated with the construction of a berm and pumping station to protect the Fairfield wastewater treatment plant, the animal control facility, the fire training center, and the conservation department workshop, whereas the town's Water Pollution Control Authority has agreed to pay for the costs of the project and the debt service on the bonds authorized by the amended resolution, but has requested the town pay one-half of the debt service on the bonds. And whereas the town has determined that it is appropriate that half of the debt service on the bonds be paid from the town's general fund and half from the funds of the Water Pollution Control Authority, now therefore be it resolved that one-half the debt service on the bonds, as it comes due, shall be paid from the town's general fund and one-half from the Water Pollution Control Authority from its old funds, and the obligation of the Water Pollution Control Authority shall be set forth in a memorandum of understanding with the town satisfactory to the first election. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right, so now both items are on the table before us. Mr. Bowman, are you going to speak to them?
Speaking to the first one, anyway.
I think you have information, but I think the most important thing is following the money, so I probably do as great show a timeline of how we got where we were to where we are, what happened, but that is probably the most important thing.
Then, in 2015, the town submitted a permit and a grant apparition for an earthen berm and a stormwater pump station for $3 million. The funding had come from three sources, $2,316,000 from the State Department of Housing and $386,000 each from the WPCA and the town of Fairfield. And that was approved by both, all the boards in the past. The next year, Tiger Bomb was selected as a design engineer, but it took two years before we get ready to get, bid the project mainly because of Army Corps engineers and state DEP permitting, which took forever. Bids were received, the low bid by Holzner Electric of $5,360,000, which is $2,268,660,000 over the original estimate. The two major design changes that were required responsible for that, $1,750 for the sheet pile wall rather than an earthen dike, as required because of geotechnical studies and conditions and good engineering practice. The final width and depth of the berm made an earthen project impossible, eventually lose integrity and settle into the marsh. The second thing was $350,000 for a second stormwater pump required by DEP. That made $2,100,000 of the $2,268 overage. Anyway, during 2018, the town, Public Works, was able to negotiate with Holzner, reduce its price by $873,000 to $4,483,000. During the summer, the past summer, there were other increases, large increases there to that project, however. $681,900 add-on alternate for clean fill to replace the town fill that we were originally going to use. $240,821 in design costs, which were for the Tiger Bomb, which was not appropriated in the original operation, and a half a million dollar for construction monitoring of the project as it goes forward, and $1,113,000 for a 20% contingency, bringing that total to $7,419,265. But in the meantime, the town received two separate grant increases from the State Department of Housing of $1,016,102, bringing the total to $3,332,102 in funding. So now, we look at the total project cost of $7,419,000, $3,332,000 in grants, leaving $4,870,000 to be funded. Again, once again, the WCC is asking the town split the funding with a 50/50. WPCA has funded $2,43,582. The town prior approved $386,000. So the WPCA is asking tonight is the Board of Selectmen approve an appropriation of Just by the way, the project has to be completed by September 30, 2020, or we just lose all the money involved in it, so. So I just try to bring the money from then to now where we are.
All right, is any further presentation?
That's as much as it is.
Okay.
If you have a map, someone wants to see what it looks like.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I have a couple. Why was the design cost not appropriated originally?
I wasn't there, I have no idea.
Was this a case where, you know, the original bid came in and they just couldn't, they couldn't complete the project for what they bid it out for?
By the time the project was out to bid, we knew that it had to be switched from an earthen berm to the metal and the second pump, so we knew it was going to come in higher than original, you just didn't know how much higher.
So, I mean, it came, I mean, it came in double?
Yeah.
Over double?
Just for those two items, over $2 million.
That's what I have right now. For now, Mr. Bateson, did you have any?
Yeah, at Board of Finance, the last Board of Finance meeting, a question was asked about the, about the grants. What about the grants? Have we talked to anybody at state? Is there anything we can do to ensure that we don't lose these grants if we put this project on hold?
No, this is like the third extension already. It's, it's, it's September 20th. The main, important thing is, is surprising that Holzner has held its pricing for a year and a half now and willing to continue to hold it, but the grants cannot be extended any further. The problem there, as it shows in the 14 points, is tied to other projects. The microgrid, the $2.5 million microgrid we're putting in at the treatment plant, which is 100% funded by the state, we had to stop work on because a precondition for the microgrid is that this had to be bermed. So we didn't have the money to burn it, we could be asked to pay back the million and a half we've already spent on the microgrid if we don't complete the berm as we were required to. In addition to that, the fuel cell is there, and a fuel cell then becomes a danger and a flood also, and we didn't pay for that because of power purchase agreement, but I would think the company might ask for damages if they were damaged because we didn't complete the berm. So it's, and the last, last...
The microgrid up and running, I thought that was on hold.
Yes, we spent $1,300,000 already, but then we stopped when we realized that we didn't have the money to finish this.
Okay.
And the most important thing is the facility plan. The state's requiring that whole facility to be protected on that 100-year flood. We're talking about 20 or 30, even more million dollars just to raise the existing facilities to be protected. So $7 million is a lot of money, but it saves a potential in the future of 30 to 40 million dollar costs, so.
Okay, just as a follow-up then also, we've added in $500,000 for a project manager, construction monitoring on this?
Yes.
All right. And then, a million dollars in contingency, was there any contingency in the original numbers?
No. It was not. I, I wasn't there then, but, you know, it just, I don't know why we didn't appropriate money for engineering, I don't know why there wasn't a contingency, but there was not.
Okay, is 20% a reasonable number?
I think it's a high number, but if you, with our history, we felt that we ought to be very conservative. God knows what will happen next, you know, I just don't want, we don't, our engineers are assured it's a very conservative, you know, now, there shouldn't be any large increases. But the increases that we got are all from a change in project, not from bidding on the existing, you know, what was supposed to be.
When we set up the microgrid, and that's functioning, will that have any impact on the costs at the water treatment facility?
What that will do, it'll run those facilities when UI is out of power. And it also will run the pumps in this berm here, so it continues to run. And that's why we, we made them natural gas generators to run the pumps, tied it to the microgrid. If they were diesel generators and when we were out of power, they wouldn't run, because you can't deliver diesel, that's what's happened in the last two. So everything's tied together that way.
Okay. And the $350,000 for the second stormwater pump station, that was mandated by DEP?
Yes.
That sounds like a new mandate, how did that come about?
Well, the original design, we thought, you know, in 15, that one pump would do it. They like redundancy, they want to make sure that we have more than enough capacity to pump out. If they're going to, we're going to spend the money to protect it from outside water coming in, they want to make sure they can pump the rainwater that's coming in and back out. They added that requirement during the proceedings.
Okay, so in a heavy rain event, like a hurricane, the idea is that that water would come inside the berm and the pumps would then pump it out?
The berm would keep the sea water out.
Right.
The pumps would take the rainwater and pump it out.
What's the September 20th date you mentioned?
That's the cutoff date on the grant.
For, like, next week?
No, no, 2020. Has to be spent by 2020.
Is that spent or completed?
Well, it's completed, I mean, the project has to be completed by 2020, September 20th, September 30th, 2020.
The obvious question, is that enough time to get it done?
Holzner assures us it's enough time to get it done. Assuming we don't wait until December or January.
Okay, so what's the 14 points? Is there a timetable that shows when we start construction and?
I don't think there's anything in there, no. The RTM, Board of Finance and RTM approve it at their next meetings, it's October, it would start in November.
Okay.
And within 30 days of approval, they'll be on site.
All right, and they can work through the winter, that doesn't cause a problem?
It can work through the winter, because a lot of it's just moving dirt and things like, and, you know, there's still going to be dirt as well as sheeting, but a lot of the work can be done during the winter.
I mean, I'm, you know, everything which comes to me right now, I'm a little cautious on. The trust-but-verify mode is what I'm in right now. I don't like being hit with a project which is double what we originally proposed. You know, I have questions regarding the state, the state requirements, whether the state can, whether we can get a postponement or the September 20th date. I mean, I'd like to see if I can get answers to those questions, although I do appreciate what you're telling us tonight, Mr. Bowman, you warranted the original...
No, but this is the third postponement already, that's the problem. They like the money spent. We got a million dollars, the extra million, from other towns who couldn't complete the work in time, and took the money away from them and reassigned it to us. They just, they only give you so much time, then they just give it to someone else.
I, I understand the frustration here. This is a significant project, it's incurred a significant overrun, and quite frankly, we've lost our Director of Public Works, who's a critical component, and anything that goes down, goes on down there. I assume we're in a search mode for that position, but in the absence of that leadership role, to go forward with this at this time is extremely concerning. Yes, what you're presenting to me seems to make sense to me, but our new person is going to be married to a philosophy and a project and a vision that they might not, there might be a better idea out there in a new person. I'm just saying, I don't, this is really bad timing. And without that leadership and that engineering experience, I just think we got to put a pause on this, and I know what I'm putting at risk, I'm well aware of it, but I just, my gut is telling me we got to wait until we get our Director of Public Works in here, they can get up to speed on what's going down there and be on board with this and come storming in here and say, yeah, we need it. That's where I am.
Well, all I can say is timetable wouldn't allow that. That's, you know, it's guaranteeing we won't finish the project, guaranteeing we won't get the grant.
I think that last time we went out looking for Director of Public Works, it took two to three months, and I would expect it would be a comparable time this time.
I think one of the things, so let's not forget that the treatment plant supervisor is pretty well aware of what's going on down there, and the town engineering department's been tremendously involved in this project. And now we have money to make sure Tiger Bomb is on board, so we'll have, you know, in-house engineering advice as well as the...
Here, I mean, specifically to what you just said, I mean, we had many opportunities come before the board to give us an update that the project had changed, there's going to be cost overruns coming, this is not going to be in what you approved, I mean, if you want to start at any one of the summer months coming up here, and here we're getting it legitimately, like as Ed said, at a very improper, you know, bad time to be giving it to us.
Couldn't be worse.
Yeah, couldn't be worse. It couldn't be worse, and, I mean, those are, those are my thoughts. The microgrid, you mentioned, how long have we had to complete the hardening project around the microgrid? What's that timetable to get it done? Is it just when, when we can get it done, or do they put like a firm date?
Our microgrid has timetable, we can extend that one because we only had it extended once. They understand the reason for not completion on this project, it's waiting for the hardening, it can't be completed. If it can't be completed, then we'll be paying back that money.
And that's one and a half million dollars?
Like, 1.3 million so far.
We pay that back? We pay that back?
You have to pay it back, yeah. Because if you wouldn't be able to complete it, they're going to make you pay it back.
So, I mean, based upon that news, it's, it's we pay 1.3 to the microgrid project, or we pay an additional, what was the additional, the town has to?
Two million or something.
A million six on the town side to complete the project.
I can make one comment?
At the mic, if you would, Mr. Mayor.
From a financial perspective, Bob, Mayor, CFO, the WPCA board voted to do this. They also voted to request the town pay half of the additional funds. So by passing the approval, the authorization of the, of the expenditure, you're not authorizing any more money out of the town general fund coffers. It would all come out of the WPCA coffer.
Or, if I can say that, you're basically saying that item five authorizes the money but doesn't authorize any increased town participation. Item six is the one that deals with increased town participation.
That's a correct statement.
So if we just, if we just pass item five, it stays with the existing participation. Mr. Bateson, since you sit on the board, is that your understanding also?
No, I, I wasn't there.
And the minutes aren't ready yet, or I would have brought them?
Can you walk, can you walk me through this logic, or what you just said again?
Yeah, the, I was not at that, that meeting, I couldn't attend that meeting, I attended the prior meeting, but did not attend that meeting of the WPCA. But what, they, my understanding of what the resolution that was before them and what they passed, based upon the reports to me of the meeting, is that they voted to complete the berm, period. That was one vote.
And that's, that's contained in item five?
Item five. With a commitment that they would pay for all, any and all difference out of their fund balance if necessary, or out of their race going forward to help participate in the principal payments and the interest payments in the bond. And then, they had a, I don't know if it was a second motion, or if it was included in the first motion, but they also voted to request the town pay one-half of the, consistent with the first, the initial authorization, that the town pay one-half of the town share. Now, the, the total request increase is $4,331,000, but there's the additional grant funding...
Yeah, these are the draft.
Oh, got the draft minutes.
Right there.
Well, you've got more power than I got. But to finish my numbers, the request, the additional funding requirement total is $4,331,000. The, there's an additional grant of $1,016,000, so the net additional cost to the project is $3,315,000. The additional, so you divide that by two, so then that would be the cost of the town of 1.6 million dollars additional. Now, with that said, you guys have the authority to do, A, turn down the project in total, B, approve the project and allow WPCA to pay it through the rate structure, C, approve the project, pay 50/50, or D, approve the project and pay 10, 20, 30, 40, 60, 70, 80, 90% of the difference.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board on that?
I mean, as a taxpayer, it's, I mean, it's all, I'm paying the same bill and paying it on my left pocket.
No, 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 it's user bill versus taxpayer bill. There's a property tax bill and then a user bill, so it's a...
You have, you have more people, organizations that participate in the user bill than in the tax bill?
I understand, so I have commercial properties which also help carry the load for the WPCA.
And specifically the universities.
And the universities.
Yeah. Reading the minutes here, Joseph Davanzo motioned to approve $4,870,000 toward construction installation of the dike known as the hardening project around the sewer treatment pad, fire training grounds, animal shelter, and conservation workshop, with the understanding WPCA makes, also makes, also makes a request, the town will continue to participate up to 50% of the total project. So that is a quest, not a, not a requirement.
Not a stipulation to their appropriation.
Thank you, yes, good work.
So in other words, it looks like they anticipated a put-up or shut-up move, and they put up.
Well put.
How much does WPCA have in their reserve fund?
Well, I think about eight or nine million dollars, but they would, we would probably bond it, and they would probably pay for the debt, principal and interest payments through the, through the bond.
When they set their rate last week, did they go through a scenario of rate smoothing to incorporate a, the full nut of this?
Yes.
And that?
Yeah, basically, the way the rate process works is I get flow information from, from the WPCA, and I've worked the flow information into a schedule that I developed that has all the future projects going forward, because if, as you, as many people know, but maybe not everybody here knows, you know, going forward, there's about $75 million worth of projects that are going to be required in the next, you know, 15, 20 years or something. So I go out 25 years, and we do, and we kind of like look at the flow, flow estimates, and then, and construction requirements, capital improvement requirements, operating increases and changes, and then we develop a, not a recommended rate, but a rate that would cover that. They voted, it's my understanding, they voted actually for a larger rate increase than what was on my schedule.
The options you gave us, Bob, like just a couple minutes ago, different options, is that included in the packet, or is that something we just did on the fly there?
The latter.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, Mr. Mayor said we can approve it as requested, not approve the funding split as requested, and keep our, our split to what was previously approved?
Not split, but just the absolute amount, the $386,000.
Or pick any percentage in between, since it starts with this board.
So can I, can I throw this out there as the possibility? I know we have a very crowded room. I like to put it on the table at the end of the meeting, perhaps do a caucus, discuss these options, lay out a couple scenarios, then bring it back at the end of the meeting.
If that's your pleasure?
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot raised through my head, I have a lot of numbers right here. We have a lot of different options we've just been given. I think there's, I mean, if it ha, I mean, if it has to be done tonight, I, I don't see how...
When do you have to be in front of the Board of Finance? When do you have to be in front of the Board of Finance?
Well, we have to be, I know, it would be, go to the Board of Finance on October 2nd.
First or 2nd.
When's our next meeting?
First Tuesday, after that. So we'd have to have a special meeting for literally next week to do this, though we could approve item five, so that moves forward, and then come back and revisit the split.
I think we should keep it together as a package.
Okay. We also have that option.
All right, I'm going to make a motion and put it on the table, and with the intent of bringing it back at the end of the meeting.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on the move to table?
No.
Any comments from the public on the motion to table? Back to the board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that item is tabled. Sheila, will you please make sure we bring that back before we end the meeting? All right, so that, in fact, we have now tabled two items, item five and item six. All right, and moving forward to item seven. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution, resolve that the town of Fairfield sell a portion of property known as 135 Pine Creek Avenue to 123 Pine Creek Associates LLC for the sum of $66,000, as more particularly set forth in the real estate sales agreement between parties. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Fallon, are you here to address this?
I am, Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Lesser is here, but he asked that I would make the presentation. For the record, I am John Fallon, I'm here, I represent 123 Pine Creek LLC. The equitable owner of that is Mr. Keith Charette, who is seated in the second row. I've mounted a plan that you, I think, have copies of, but very simply, 123 Pine Creek is improved by a single-family residence. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, it only has 5,000 square feet, as you can see, it's quite narrow. It abuts a town parcel, 135 Pine Creek Avenue, that is an oversized parcel, it's approximately 13,000 square feet. It is improved by a pump station that is shown on the plans we've submitted. We've entered into a contractual agreement that is contingent upon your approval and the approval of the RTM for the conveyance by the town of a portion, 800 square feet, of the 135 parcel to 123. That will make the town parcel 12,200 square feet, and will increase the size of the 123 to 5,800 square feet. The reason that we have done this, and we've worked closely with the town attorney and the engineering department, is this will facilitate, as you can see from the plan, an opportunity to render the property with a really kind of safe, functional driveway. The driveway doors are here, presently the driveway is very, very narrow. What you show here, just so there's no confusion, that dotted line is just the proposed driveway if you should approve the transfer. So basically what we're doing is we're asking your approval of the contract that's already been signed, for the town to convey the 800 square feet to my client, thereby rendering, as I said, the driveway safer and more functional for his use. We did, working with the town attorney, have a full real estate appraisal prepared by Karen Enfazio, who have, from time to time, actually represented the town as well. They're very reputable and well-regarded. They valued the property, the partial take of 800 square feet, at $66,000. They rely on numerous comparables and what have you. Based upon that, and with the concurrence of the town attorney and the engineering department, we did enter into a contract, as I said, that's been signed. In accordance with the contract, we provided to the town a 10 percent deposit, as is customary, of 6,600 square feet. So at the end of the day, what we will have for this market value transaction is no diminution or adverse impact to the use of the property owned by the town at 135, but yet a very positive benefit to my client in terms of a functional driveway. Early on, we explored the possibility of an easement, which might even be somewhat more desirable for us to some extent, but the town felt, I think correctly, that by a pure conveyance, it would return this 800-square-foot strip to the tax rolls. Obviously, it will increase the tax assessment on 123, and since it was considered to be surplus, it won't have any impact on the operation of the pump station, the town determined and we concurred that we would suggest to you a contract where we would purchase the property, you have that in your package as well, and it is that that we're asking you to approve, so we can move on to the RTM. But it's a purely market rate, market value transaction, causing no adverse impact to the town, and it does benefit my client in terms of the function and safety of its driveway. Please answer any questions you may have.
Any comments from the board? Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, quick thing, John.
Yes, sir.
In determining the value of that strip, did we approach it from the value that it adds to his parcel?
Both. When you look at, when you look at the Karen Enfazio report, which is quite lengthy, the answer is they did consider the enhanced value to the property, as well as the diminution to the town, and basically, they also looked at comparable information that would yield an appropriate value per square foot.
Did you talk to engineering about the easement there?
We originally had a conversation, yes, we're, there is, we're not doing anything that will in any way impact current town easements. We did have a conversation at one point with the town and the engineering department, whether or not the 800-square-foot, instead of being conveyed, would be subject to an easement benefiting 123, but as I said, the judgment ultimately was, it was a cleaner transaction.
No, I'm talking about, it looks like there's a sewer line going into that pump house.
Yeah, totally, that is of record, and this will have no impact on that.
And you talked to engineering and WPCA, is there any plan to improve that pump station in the near future?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Timniak?
So the dotted line you have down here is his current property line?
Yeah, no, the current property line, Mr. Timniak, is, yes, that's, it's that current dotted line here.
Right.
The blue line would be the lot line revised, and that sort of double line is just where the proposed driveway would go if you approved the transaction.
And do we have, is there any fence up there right now, or anything like that, or is this an open field?
No, it's just, it's an open, it's open right now.
Any other comments from the board?
The only thing I was going to say too, I thought it was a fair evaluation, because if you take the valuation of $66,000 for the 800 square feet, it does work out to a valuation, if you want to look at it that way, that an acre of property would be worth $3 million. So I think, that's not to say that that's right, but I think what it shows is that the analysis that was made by Karen Enfazio, in terms of the before and after values to 135, is very conservative from the time it was properly settled.
Is it going to be a gravel driveway or an asphalt driveway?
It'd be a gravel driveway. Yeah, it has to be because of the zone, yes, it has to be purgus.
All right, then moving on to the public, any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we're back to the board.
I'd like to make an amendment, or discuss something.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution that after it, say, proceeds of the sale shall be deposited in the Grace Richardson Trust.
Where would you like to add that in?
At the end.
So hereby is approved, and such proceeds to be taught.
Deposited in the Grace Richardson Trust Fund?
That sounds, Sheila, do you have that down? I think that's comparable to what we've done elsewhere.
Yeah.
You've got that?
I'll second that amendment.
For the amendment, any further discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment, and the amendment only? Please come to the mic.
I'm Kevin Gumper, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission, and we have been using the Richardson Fund, and we'd love to have the money put into that fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendment, and the amendment only? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the item is before us now as amended? Any further discussion on the item?
No.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Whoa, sorry, let's go back to the public on the item as amended, my apologies. Any comments from the public on the item as amended? Seeing none, now back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item number nine, from the town attorney also. This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, and a report from Town Plan and Zoning Commission. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution, as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development, resolve that the town of Fairfield purchase the property known as 1020 Old Post Road, Sessors Map Number 180 Lot 3, from Helen E. McElroy Revocable Trust for the sum of $825,000, as more particularly set forth in real estate sales agreement between said parties. Further resolve that a bond resolution entitled, a resolution appropriating $1.2 million for the costs acquiring and improving 1020 Old Post Road to expand the parking lot at the main public library, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be, and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnhart.
Why, it was getting larger. Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the town, here to present a proposal for your consideration to purchase property at 1020 Old Post Road, to use the back portion of that property to expand parking to service the main public library. Provide a little aerial map, I think you're all familiar with the site, but the library's here. This is Broadhurst Manor, by the Kennedy Center, this is the subject parcel, 1020 Old Post Road, it's about a half-acre parcel, oversized lot for this particular zone, it's approved with a two-story, single-family home in the front half of the lot, and this property right here, 1010, is actually town-owned property, which is an unimproved right-of-way or street, paper street. So this opportunity, this property has been on the market for a period of time, the library director brought this to the attention of the town, looked at the site, we did work with the engineering department to determine the feasibility of adding to the parking in the back. By doing so, we would split the lot, use the back portion of the property to expand parking, which would more or less double the size of the existing parking facility for the main public library. They currently have 49 spaces on site, I missed, went down and physically counted the spaces, originally I'd estimated 50, so this would add another 48 spaces to that, bringing the total up to 97 parking spaces if this proposed acquisition improvement were approved. The parcel is situated within a designated historic district, its own residence A, the minimum lot size for residence A is 9,375 square feet, so this is significantly larger than minimum lot size. The proposed purchase price, contract purchase price is $825,000. It is subject to contingencies, obviously it requires the approval of this board, the approval of the Board of Finance, the approval of the representative town meeting. It also is contingent upon the approved use of the facility or the back portion of the lot for parking, which needs to be approved by not only the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Historic District Commission. The estimated cost to make the improvements, the engineering manager, Bill Hurley, is here with me this evening and can speak to some of those details if need be, is estimated at $325,000, bringing the total to a little 1.15. We rounded it off for purposes of asking for an authorization of 1.2 to include a contingency, as well as to provide for contingency, not just for in terms of construction, but in the event that there was any intent to hold the property, the residence rather, for some length of time, to provide for some carrying cost. There was really a couple of different scenarios here, if we're interested in pursuing this, completing the purchase acquisition with respect to the residence, it could be used for a municipal purpose, none has been identified, there doesn't seem to be any immediate need at present, so another scenario would be to do a lot line revision and sell the front half of the property, the lot, with the residence as a single-family home. There was another bidder that was interested in acquiring the property at the time which the town made an offer. That entity or that individual is interested in purchasing the front half of the property with the house, with the parking lot behind, although we haven't worked out any details that was, there is interest there. So I put that out as another option. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any comments from the board?
It seems like it's a little incomplete, it made it on the agenda, what are your thoughts on this?
One, when this opportunity came up, I thought it was worthy of discussion, and in order to have that discussion, we really needed to get it before the board. We also needed to get an agreement that we could present to the library Board of Trustees to see if they were interested. When I looked at this, if we were looking at expanding parking, there are only so many options, and if this goes away, we probably won't have that option again in the future. We've also gotten some, I assume you both were copied on the emails I got from the neighborhood, there's some concerns about what's taking place with that. I think that, Mark, you were at the Library Board of Trustees, did they pass a sensitive body, any resolution at all indicating their enthusiasm for this?
They did not pass a motion while I was at the meeting, my understanding, subsequent to the meeting, there was, there was interest in it, I don't know the degree to which there is interest in it. The notation or the, what was referenced to me was that it was not necessarily part of their strategic plan. The library director and staff did acknowledge that they have received, this is an issue that's brought to their attention routinely by patrons of the library, so from their perspective, they saw a definite need. But again, this was not an opportunity that we were necessarily focused on, it just presented itself, and again, I thought it was worthwhile bringing it to the board's attention to determine whether or not we wanted to pursue it, because as you've pointed out, I think once, if we pass on this, I don't think the opportunity will necessarily present itself again. So the fact that it abuts, is situated between two town-owned properties, abuts the existing library parking lot, and then abuts other town property at 1010 Old Post Road, made it appealing.
And I think that the challenge on any of this is when you look at a long enough horizon, you're sitting here saying, as much as we may not want to do it right today, if we don't do something, then this opportunity is gone. So in order to put something together that could be discussed with the Library Board of Trustees, in essence presented to the neighborhood, and in essence presented the, at least this board, if no others, to see how this might come together and see how that might work, it seemed very appropriate to have that discussion, as opposed to just passing on it. passing on it, not having that discussion.
So are we having a discussion? Are we voting, are we voting on this bond resolution?
Well, we would have the discussion and vote on the bond resolution.
Tonight? All that tonight? So, and one of my thoughts is, it's $26,500 per parking spot, based upon the numbers I gave, you just gave us. It does seem like a unique opportunity, because the lot is in the back and the house is in the front. I did talk to you last Friday about this. You didn't give me an indication that I was going to vote on this on Wednesday when we spoke.
Wasn't sure it was going to be presented this Wednesday or not.
Okay. So, and then I got a huge packet in our packet yesterday. So I really feel like the public is just getting an opportunity to get a look on this. And here we are, supposed to vote on it. And I mean, as, as it goes, people are paying attention right now. And I've received several calls for and multiple calls against. And I haven't had an opportunity to take a temperature, a temperature of what the neighborhoods, neighborhood groups are looking for here. I do appreciate that it was brought in front of us. I, I do think it's a very unique opportunity. It's one, one I think we've got to do all of our due diligence on. But I'm not prepared to vote and approve this tonight.
I'd like to make a motion table until our next meeting and then give some guidance to Mark.
Postpone it to a date certain?
Postpone it to a date certain and give Mark some guidance of what we would expect, of what I would expect to see.
All right. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
So as part of, do you want to have some discussion on that or?
Yeah. My thoughts are, yeah, definitely, Mark. I'm all for increasing parking. I would like to see more and more hard engineering done on this through, with planning and zoning, because if we're going to match the elevations on these parking lots, it looks like we're going to have to elevate the rear of the required property. So-
There is a fill involved, yes. We've done, yeah.
Just want to make sure that the lot, the slope down-
Yep.
And any kind of, that's going to move the lot line, proposed lot line. So I want to make sure that we sit down with zoning and we can make sure that the front, I don't want to keep the front house. That's just me personally. I, I mean, you said, we don't need a building, so I'm not buying a building if I don't need it. So part of my exit strategy on this would be to make a marketable residence in the front, marketable property. Figure that number into any equation we had. And I think we have to go back to the library Board of Trustees and ask them how much money they have and how much they're willing to ship in, because them saying it has nothing to do with their strategic plan, no. Parking always has everything to do with everyone's, any town facility's strategic plan. So, you know, they need to pony up some money on their end. My ultimate goal is to drive the acquisition costs of this down to as close to zero on the taxpayer as I can. That, that's my goal, to make it palatable. That's where I am.
All right.
I concur with those statements, Eddie.
Okay.
Hammered all of the points I was interested in.
Given this is, because it's a real estate transaction, there were some other buyers involved, certainly things move quickly and that's not how we normally do things. But, so I would also suggest that since the public hasn't had a chance to see what's taking place, Mark, could we arrange for a public meeting to kind of both describe this to the neighbor, but also get neighbor feedback?
Sure.
So we have that in a more fuller form. I know that, I think, I'm going to say, I've gotten 25 emails with opposition to this. So I want to make sure that the neighbors get their opportunity to both fully understand that and, if you will, quantify their concerns. The other question was the Historic District Commission. There were several approval things that, that seemed to need to move you described. Is the Historic District Commission, does this board have to weigh in before it gets the Historic District Commission? How's the, that work?
Well, to Selectman Bateson's initial comment and to yours as well, with regard to public input, there is a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission next Tuesday. Again, in order to gauge whether or not a parking lot use could be permitted, we needed to accelerate that timeline to get it done or get a decision from Planning and Zoning prior to the anticipated closing date. So there is this opportunity to, for the public to weigh in. At that point, we obviously do have some more detailed drawings as relates to drainage and the like. There was some outreach to some of the, the two homeowners that abut the existing town-owned property at 1010 Old Post Road. I won't say that they're in favor. I wouldn't characterize it. I, my, my purpose was really to, to inform them of the town's interests and to lay out some, several different scenarios that we were looking at at the time. So there has been some outreach, but I'm also cognizant of some of the commentary or feedback you received. And I wanted, I do think it's appropriate to provide some information so that people can make an informed judgment or educated judgment on this, because there's some information that's frankly not, not correct out there. For example, where there's no intent to tear down that house. In fact, we had to provide the seller assurances that the house would remain as is. It was not the intent to demolish the house to make way for parking. So that, I wanted to clarify that if I didn't already speak that issue previously.
Did the library Board of Trustees get back to you with any questions they had?
They do have questions and I've done my best to answer them, but I will certainly circle back with the library board to ascertain whether or not they have additional questions that I can, that I can answer. But the, the guidance that I heard tonight is, is very helpful.
Now, in terms of the approval process, the Plan and Zoning Commission, that's just a report. That's not an, or is that an approval?
It's both.
Did you, because if somebody could explain that?
So there is, if, so any purchaser, purchase, acquisition, sale of town-owned property requires a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute. So there is a referral and a report back from the Planning and Zoning Commission as to the desirability of purchasing this property. In addition to that, the sale is contingent upon the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the permitted, of the use for the subject property as parking, at least the back half of it, for parking purposes. Because if not, there's really no point for us pursuing this, as was pointed out. In terms of the Historic District Commission, thereto, we have filed a certificate of appropriateness with the Historic District Commission. It does require their review and approval subject with respect to the parking lot use. And so we have filed that and that, that hearing will occur in early October. All this obviously has to take place before the end of October in order for us to close, if we want to, on the property as of November 5th.
All right, is that clear to the board?
Yes.
All right. Would there be an opportunity, Mark? Would there be an opportunity for the library Board of Trustees to weigh in and vote as to their encouragement or?
They don't have, well, I think their next scheduled meeting is mid-October. I believe they could always schedule a special meeting if they so choose. I will go back and talk to the library board to determine, you know, again, whether then they have additional questions that I could answer and then also ascertain their position with respect to the proposed acquisition.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, may I just address-
Please.
Before we get, Stanton Lester, Town Attorney. I've been dealing with Peter Ambrose on this. Peter represents the sellers. And are sellers here, any of them? Property's in an estate. They had another offer on the property, so, and Peter indicated to us that his clients wanted to deal with the town, but do want to sell the property. So we assured them that, that we would move this along as quickly as they, as we could. Obviously, I think I agree with everything that Mark has said. I think we are trying to, trying to do kind of a little parallel track here, just so that we can save some time. But it's still contingent on all these, including approval by this board. So I'm going to, I will report back to Peter on what happened here. I think that he, he should be okay. When, when is the next Board of Selectmen meeting, so I can tell him?
First week of October.
Okay.
First Wednesday.
So, I mean, I think, inasmuch as we're still trying to get the other approvals, we're not delaying that. Hopefully, they'll be okay with that and we can move this along. Everybody will have time to properly consider.
I think from a timing standpoint, it then delays by a month it going to the Board of Finance and the RTM.
Okay.
All right. So the item to, motion to postpone before us. Any comments from the public on the motion to postpone and the motion to postpone only? If you'd just come up to the mic?
My name's Ann Cades. I live at 996 Old Post Road, and this will severely impact my, the value of my property. So I'm very interested in what's going to happen here. I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be more involved in the process. What we have seen so far were drafts, so we had no idea what any plan was until I clicked on the packets for this meeting for Monday. And now it seems like they're not even final. So it's, it's very stressful for me, but also I'd just like to see, I'd like to have a little bit of an input, but also you can't really formulate an idea necessarily until you know exactly what you're dealing with. So I find that very frustrating. So I appreciate tabling it to figure out more details, excuse me, and also the opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, just to continue, you will arrange for that neighborhood meeting. Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I'm Kevin Gumper. I live at 315 Carroll Road. I'm here as a private citizen. I came here to be heard on this matter tonight. And there may be other members of the public that want to be heard on this matter tonight. So I don't know why you wouldn't allow some public comment, if any, prior to tabling it.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay with the board?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. All right. If anyone would like to comment on more than just a postponement, please field.
I'm Erica Menard, and I live at 1,000 Old Post Road. And I wanted to point out the facts behind the town's acquisition of the right-of-way in 1960, which I think people are not generally aware of. The property was conveyed, it's a 60-foot right-of-way, and it's about 16,000 square foot total. And it traverses the vast majority of our front yards, mine and the Cadiz's. The property was conveyed by City Trust Company as executor and conservator of the estates of two women who owned the entire property back in 1960. And through my sleuthing and looking at online deed records and prior plans, it turns out that the property was actually acquired by the town in connection with a planned center business road that you can see here that was planned as of 1960. That's our front yard right there. I searched deed records and I found nothing indicating that the town ever acquired the remainder of the property across the Old Post Road that would have been necessary to establish this center business road. So basically, the property, it's vested in the town. Very, very vague language in there, the right to pass and repass. Since my husband and I bought our house in November of 1999, we have plowed it, we have cleared tree branches away from it, we have mowed it, we have maintained it, we have never submitted any, you know, expenses to the town of Fairfield. I think once last year, the town came out and removed a tree, a huge tree, that was in danger of falling down and hitting our homes. So given the fact that the, the town acquired the property in connection with a road that was never approved, that never came to fruition, there was never any final plan approved for it, it was certainly never dedicated as a public right-of-way, yet we have people cutting across our yard. Anyone and everyone seems to think that because it's a quote-unquote "paper road," although not dedicated, they have the right to use our property. And I would disagree with that. I think you'd have difficulty establishing, even if you wanted to do some kind of a conveyance or as you would with a, with a right-of-way, there's no way to know what the center line is. The final road configuration was never agreed upon. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Jan Reber Beaumont Street. I have no opinion on this one way or the other. I just have two questions. One is, where do library employees park? How much of the parking is taken up by them? Secondly, if the property's divided and the front is sold, is it going to be a conforming lot? It's not legal, and I think Mr. Fallon will agree. You can't create a lot that's not conforming, correct?
You cannot create a non-conforming lot.
Yeah. So I think the question of whether or not the front lot would be conforming or not is a critical issue here.
Yeah. Any other comments from the public?
Again, I'm Kevin Gumper. I live at 315 Carroll Road. I've lived there, I've lived in Fairfield my whole life. I've been using this library for the last 40 years. Before that, I used the Peacock Library. It's always crowded there at parking. This is a rare opportunity. Opportunity is the right word. This is one of those situations where it sounds like a bad, maybe controversial idea now, if you don't buy the property in 10 years, it's one of these things you're going to say, God, were we dumb? And as to your comment on the $26,000 per lot, that assumes you don't get anything back for the house-
Right.
For space. It is going to be a lot, some significant engineering, for sure, but you need the parking here. There will be perhaps some thought-upon detriment to the neighborhood, but I look at this piece that you're talking about putting in the parking. It's got a parking lot on one side for the Brick Walk. It's got a parking lot on the second side for the library. It's got the proposed house, I mean, the existing house on the third side. And on the fourth side, it's got a town right-of-way. So it's not exactly like you're tearing down a virgin piece of property. There's never been parking in this area. With respect to the non-conforming, conforming, I think the testimony here prior by, or the comment before by Mark Barnhart was that it would be a conforming lot. Since it's fairly big, it's about a half an acre, and you'd only need 9375 in the A Zone. And in any event, you can in fact go and get a waiver from the ZBA, which would allow you to subdivide your property, even, which would result in a non-conforming lot. But I would think that this is something that, again, it's an opportunity. It's, it's expensive. It might, it might be expensive. It might have some public opposition. But in the long run, I think, and the long run only being like five years, you'll say, that was a good move. And if you don't do it, it would, again, be one of these really dumb things that the town didn't do. And I'm sure in your experience, you've seen a lot. I mean, you, just the one that jumps out in front of my mind is all the property in front of Riverfield School, which could have been purchased for half-nothing in 1959. Now we got 20 houses there with kids and everything and a crowded school. So I think that you're, as prudent stewards of the town's future, you should seriously take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the public?
Judge, I'd just like to make two, but it's very hard to make it up to the mic. Do I need to hear?
If you could, so the folks at home, can somebody help?
I've had it for 52 years.
One of us is quest.
Both of us.
Take your time. Take your time. And again, this is when you're speaking into the mic, then the folks at home can hear your comments.
Right there.
Am I looking this way or this way?
Wherever you want to look is fine.
Right there is good. You've got it, yeah.
My name is James Miller. I currently live at 148 Southport Woods Drive in Southport. But from 1970 till 2017, I lived at 406 Old Post Road. The Old Post Road Historic Neighborhood is very near and dear to me. I agree with some of the comments that have been made tonight by the board and by Mr. Barnhart and Mr. Gumper, but I strongly disagree that this is an opportunity the town should take advantage of. In the 47 years I lived here, my neighbors and I fought tooth and nail to keep this historic district residential, historic, and important to the town, town center of the town of Fairfield. I won't reiterate all the things we've had to fight, from office buildings to turning the Burr Mansion into an office building, et cetera. This is a piece of residential property in a historic district. If you go to Bridgeport and look- If you go to Bridgeport and look at Clinton Avenue or go to Norwalk and look at East Avenue, you see what happens when you let commercialism encroach. And even though it's a town use, I think it's something that you should give some serious thought to because there are a lot of issues that I haven't heard clearly discussed as how it's being approached. If you split this property in half, you create something that under our zoning regulations today is not permitted, which is a rear lot. You cannot use another parcel for access to the rear lot. So you need to make some changes in the zoning, either through variance or some type of approval from TPZ. In addition to that, you may not use residential property for a commercial purpose like parking. So you would have to have that changed as well. And I, for one, am very concerned about the lack of plan or purpose for the house that will remain on that site in what is a very lovely old historic neighborhood that many people have spent many years trying to keep and preserve. And I think it's something the town should think about, whether or not you want to take a 70-year-old historic district and change its nature and its character for the purpose of providing parking. All towns in this county, particularly in their town centers, are aging. When the town center was developed, there weren't automobiles. And now we have too many automobiles, and we have a parking issue for everything we do in town. And just taking somebody's property and making it a parking lot, I just think is inappropriate. I have a question, and that is, you've tabled this. Is that for two weeks to the first Wednesday in October, or is it going to be a different date?
The proposal is to our-- a date certain at our next meeting, which would be the first Wednesday in October.
Fine. Thank you. I'm finished, unless you have a question for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
I appreciate your comments, Attorney Miller. It reestablishes what I've always grown up with on the Old Post Road. I appreciate your comments there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Since we changed the guidelines for commenting, yes, you can.
I just want to echo Mr. Miller's comments because I-- we purchased our home for the purpose of living in the historic district, for the protections that the historic district provides, and never in my mind did I think that the town would be the one to break the rules of it. I mean, I-- my mind is blown, like, at the fact that you are even thinking about it. Like, I sw-- like, it really blows my mind. So I just want you to please think about that. It should just chip, chip, chip away. Nothing's going to be left. And it's very-- I just think this is a really bad idea. And also, what is-- why are you promoting more traffic into the central district when you really should be promoting transit? I'm on the Bike and Pet Committee. All we're doing is trying to get people to walk and bike, and instead now, you know, the king of the car is coming back to just pave over a historic property and just so that people can park. When I-- I lived in Bridgeport for 13 years. I used the library all the time. We've only been here for four years. I never had a problem parking. You park on the street, you walk on the sidewalk. It's fine. I really don't-- I personally, I just think it's one of the worst ideas I've ever heard. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi. I'd like to-- I'm Jennifer Andreas, and I also live on the Old Post Road right across from the library. And I agree with both what Attorney Miller and Ms. Katus said, as well as our neighbor on West Morgan. The historic district has a high stand-- higher standard than all the other neighborhoods. I mean, look at our town seal right behind you. That is exactly what our town is about. We're obligated to protect and preserve this for future generations. Why do we have a historic district commission? There's no reason. If the town is just going to plow over it and make a parking lot, I mean, sell my house, make my house a parking lot. It's ridiculous. As Ann said, it's ridiculous that we're even here. And the timing of seven weeks from contract to purchase is insane. I don't even know a regular person who can buy a house in seven weeks unless you buy it in cash. So I think everyone needs to take a step back and think about the long term. What about potentially, you know, if I'm going to come here and complain, I feel like I should give you a potential solution. May be feasible, may not. Why not make a second level at the transit, you know, where the train station is? We're not buying land. We're increasing the potential of having more commuters add to our grand list by having more homes, more parking for the town, community theater. I mean, this is prime real estate now if we build a parking lot for the library for the community theater. I'm not a conspiracy theorist here, but it's a little shady. So I think the town needs to think about exactly what we believe the historic district is about. We all spend a ton of money. We all love our homes, and this is what we're here to preserve. Look what's happened to historic districts in this state. Now they've become, you know, multi-ten apartments. We have the historical museum. We had our celebration just a few years ago. I mean, it's ridiculous. I'm sorry. I just do not understand why this is something that the town would want to do. And the front house, it's a beautiful house. It needs, according to the report from the inspector, at least a million dollars of work. So if we want to buy a house that needs at least a million dollars of work, and who knows how long we have to hold on to it, I think that's a risk fiscally. I think fiscally, we should think about, not just the historic, but also at this time, with all the other expenses we have, parking lot is not the way to go. I live on the street. I work from home. I see everybody park on my street every day. There's plenty of parking. Maybe you're not riding the lot, but come on, cross the street. It's not that big of a deal. I'm not trying to belittle this proposal. I appreciate people want to have more parking, but this is not the way to do it. I think we could be smarter about what we do for parking and respect the historic district and our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. Mr. Barnhart, I think there's a question about where the library employees park now, and I think you can probably answer that for us.
Yes. If I may, I'd like to set the record straight on a couple of other issues as well that came up. The plan that is before you in terms of the parking lot was presented to the two neighbors. I just want to make sure that people understand, while there were a lot of discussions in terms of various options, the plan that's before you is the one that was actually shown to them. This will be a conforming lot. We decided to sell all of the front half of the parcel with the residents. It will conform. I did review that with the planning and zoning staff, and so it is a conforming lot. Uses of the town are permitted, subject to securing a special exception. Oops, sorry. Uses of the town are permitted under our current zoning regulations, subject to securing a special exception, which is the purpose of the public hearing next week. So it's not a commercial use. It's a use of the town. It does not constitute a rear lot because it would be merged to the existing town-owned property with the library. As with respect to the library staff, a number of them purchase at town's cost downtown employee parking permits. 13 employees pay for downtown employee parking permits at a cost of $4,000 annually. Obviously, that takes away from parking. That would be able to provide for other businesses in the downtown district. I believe, again, the primary intent here is not to provide necessarily parking for staff, but parking for patrons and visitors of the library. As was mentioned, most of the folks, if there are not sufficient space in the current lot, park on-street. I'm happy to answer other questions, but I did want to set the record straight with a couple of issues that came up.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Hello. My name is Rusin Anagron. I'm a citizen of Fairfield, and I'm also one of the commissioners in the Historic District Commission. However, I'm here just as a citizen. I sent you guys a letter the other day, and I just want to reiterate that the house is a great example in Fairfield of the bungalow craftsman style, as shown on the page 56 of the Historic District Properties Handbook. In my opinion, changing the character of the lot with a parking lot at the rear of the property will diminish the integrity of the historic district. If-- I feel that if you guys are prepared to set a precedent in the historic district by taking away the green areas of this lot, what will prevent other properties that have bought commercial lots to basically do the same thing? For example, all the houses that are behind the Brick Walk. What will prevent them from selling their extension-- like, their extended land into Brick Walk? It kind of feels that you guys are not being stewards of our historic district. There is other parking areas in Fairfield, like our neighbors have indicated, in the street. There's the one in the gazebo. There's so many others that people can actually walk and still enjoy the library. In my letter, I also mentioned that the fourth graders in this town are currently learning about groundwater and the absorption. If we pave Fairfield, what are we doing with that groundwater? We're basically increasing the issues. So just my opinion. Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi. I'm Bill Hopf. I live in Fairfield, 285 Hemlock Hills Road North. I feel that parking on the street is not really appropriate if you can avoid it. Having been to the library a lot, I see parents with their children crossing the street. And while Old Post Road is not, in my opinion, a super-busy street, it's still-- there's no crosswalk. So you'd have to go-- if you wanted to stay to a crosswalk, you have to walk out to the light and across and back. I also know that the-- there are altercations in the parking lot at the library because it's extremely tight, and people get into arguments about parking spaces. And then I think, if I understood right, Mr. Barnhart had said that the people who were interested in the lot were interested in the house with the parking lot behind it. So my recommendation to him would be to try to find out what the net amount is because when he talks to the library board, who may participate or may not, because they do have an endowment, they're going to have the same questions that you three have, which is, what is the net amount going to be? Because they might think that they might participate. I hope they will, to help the town make this happen. And I think the logic that this is perhaps the only time we'll have a shot at this, which I think is realistic, I think that a 48-space parking lot for a facility like the library, which gets the use that it gets, I think is too small. And I happen to also understand the gentleman who asked the question about staff parking, and some of the staff do park back there. And something should be done to try to find a place for them to go. I was thinking over by Sherman Green across from the Firehouse Deli, there's a public lot there, that maybe that's reasonably close, that people can be expected to park there and walk across. I think that will help. But it's still, even so, 48 spaces. I see people pull into the lot. They have to make a circle and come back out, and it's tight. I always park on the street because I can walk, but not everybody can walk. And that's one of the things that I think matters. So that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please, come on up.
Hi. I'm Peter Katus. I live at 996 Old Post Road, and I won't be long, but again, I'll reiterate, I can't believe what a crazy idea this sounds like to us. We bought our house about four years ago, and at the time, they pointed out that our driveway was on town property, but we had an easement, and it was just a technicality. But now, it's not a technicality, because you're talking about building a parking lot in our backyard. It would literally cut into our driveway, which-- and you're paving over green space for a parking lot. That just sounds like a terrible idea. We're all against it. And if people keep trying to make it happen, we'll be back.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you. It's now back to the board. I believe the motion before us is postponement. All right. To a date certain being our next meeting. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next up is item number nine, which is listed as fill pile discussion. And there've been quite a few comments and quite a bit of discussion on that. And I'd like to lead off with a bit of a statement. And from the top, there's been a lot of information, some misinformation, and some politicized information that I believe needs to be addressed and clarified as it relates to the Julian pile. A lot of questions have been asked about what I knew, when I knew it, and have I been truthful? Most of the concern centers around the police investigation and Ghul Manor. I've done my best to answer all the questions truthfully and honestly. And as it relates to my statements regarding what I knew about the police investigation, my statements have been confirmed by both former Chief McNamara and Chief Liddy that I did not want to be seen as interfering in a police investigation, and ask that they advise me only when the police investigation was completed. I was not provided with any substantive updates regarding the police investigation. Throughout this process, I've made myself available to boards, commissions, residents, members of the public, the press, and answered questions regardless of who the-- who asked the question or what it was. Unlike some people who've given incomplete information and appear to be politicizing this issue, I have made my response and the town's response solely about public safety and ensuring trust. I have made sure that I have provided all the information available and not stopped short of providing public comment. As it relates to Ghul Manor, I regretfully answered too quickly and without complete recall in August at the Board of Selectmen meeting. However, in reviewing Mr. Bateson's question, it must be made clear that neither of his statements at that time were accurate. Mr. Bateson asked whether I did not know about Ghul Manor or whether I knew about Ghul Manor and failed to take action. Neither of these statements is accurate. I was made aware of Ghul Manor in 2014 through a series of emails. However, in 2015, the same individual who made me aware issued a thank you to the town for addressing her concerns and resolving the Ghul Manor issue. I have addressed every issue properly and quickly, including remediating the fill pile, terminating the Julian lease, suing Julian, and initiating the police discussion-- investigation. It was May 3, 2013, when the bid was awarded to Julian to manage the processing facility. In 2016, the issue arose regarding the size of the pile. I worked with DPW and the residents to address the pile size with weekly updates, bi-weekly emails, and monthly meetings. In September of 2016, I made the determination not to renew the Julian lease or management of the facility. At that time, I instructed Joe Michelangelo to hire an LEP, Licensed Environmental Professional, to conduct random inspections at the processing facility. The testing continued for two months, but on November 29, 2016, during random inspection, the LEP noticed Julian dumping material that was suspicious, and she took samples. In December of 2016, the tested samples came back positive. I immediately shut down the processing facility and locked Julian out. From December 2016 through February of 2017, we worked with Conservation, DPW, and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to ensure contaminated material was properly profiled and remediated. In February or March of 2017, we interviewed law firms to initiate a suit against Julian to get our funds back for removing the contaminated soil. In the spring of 2017, I requested the police department begin a criminal investigation into the handling of the processing facility, specifically the transport and dumping of contaminated material. From 2017 through June of 2018, we worked with the neighborhood and appropriate consultants to design the berm, test the pile, and build a barrier berm-- From 2017 through June of 2018, we worked with the neighborhood and appropriate consultants to design the berm, test the pile, and build a barrier berm at the processing facility. In July of 2019, we received a copy of a search warrant for the Julian facilities. In July of 2019, I placed Scott Bartlett on administrative leave, based on some of the revelations in that. In August of 2019, we received the arrest warrants for both Scott Bartlett and Joe Michelangelo. In August of 2019, I placed Joe Michelangelo on administrative leave. In August of 2019, we began a very thorough testing process for town fields and playgrounds, all with the primary objective of getting our fields safe and making sure our children are safe. In August of 2019, I did terminate Scott and Bartlett, and in September of 2019, I terminated Joe Michelangelo. In looking at next steps, as I announced on Monday, I am proposing we form an environmental safety committee. Because of the number of issues that have come into our health department concerning the Julian fill issue, but also in terms of the number of questions that have come in, not concerning Julian, but other environmental issues around town, recommending this be a Board of Selectmen-appointed committee of five to seven members to provide public oversight, but most importantly, transparency on all these issues that come up, and to make sure each one is being dealt with. Second, reaching out to the Ethics Commission to look at our code of ethics and our code of conduct, and look at what we can do to enhance that, including educating our employees on the code of ethics, their role, and conflict of interest. I think we need, it's important we provide this support for our employees and also let them know that it's okay to raise issues. I'd like our Ethics Commission to work with our Human Resources Department on developing this, to make sure we're in compliance with any labor laws, but also in compliance with our collective bargaining agreement. And then third, I'd like, I am proposing in hotline, if you will, a whisperable hotline be installed for both phone and email, that allows confidential and updates to be made to our, for employees, but also we'd make that available to the public also. I'm going to propose that that be run through the Ethics Commission before coming into Human Resources, so they can track the types of responses, types of questions, type of issues that come up, and report back to the Board of Selectmen on a biannual or six-month basis. However, I do believe that it should be also allowed as needed, and certainly as we kick this off, I would expect it would be perhaps monthly initially as some of those items come through. So with those as next steps. And in closing, I'd like to say, despite what some of my adversaries are trying to portray as a lack of leadership, I've taken the appropriate steps with each issue that have been presented. In addition, I've done this with transparency, and I've made myself available to questions from all. I have not shied away from any boards or commissions regardless of whether I had an obligation to appear before them. It should be noted that it's easy to criticize when you don't have to make the decisions, but I've managed this issue during a campaign season where there may be some individuals politicizing this issue for personal gain and might not be so interested in the actual facts. I'm confident in the way that I've handled this situation, and I suspect that every objective person would agree that I took the necessary and appropriate steps to document and ensure residents' safety. So with that as kickoff, let's open this up to questions from the board.
Yeah. First of all, are you going to post that online, your statement?
I can, certainly.
Yeah, could you? That was a lot. I don't even know where to begin. I'll take exception to what you said about, I saw that video that I was in this morning too, online, and I don't understand how you could think that my statements are inaccurate, or were you referring to your own statements?
I wasn't referring to your statements or mine. There have been statements made over the past six weeks.
Okay. I thought that video was pretty cut and dry. You didn't give an explanation as to anything in there about that video that was posted this morning. So I don't understand what you were saying there, that's why I'm asking you to post that.
Happy to do that.
Okay. I'm going to go back, while you kicked off that, you know, who said, she said, what said, who knew what, when. I think last meeting was, I see the chief is here tonight, I was wishing he was here two weeks ago. I think we've established, or I have gotten happy to a degree of what I think who knew what, when. I know that when we were discussing the civil matter, part of your rationale was is I didn't want to appear like I was interfering with the civil case. That I kind of understood. But in listening to what I heard happen at the Police Commission, the gravity of what the chief had should have dictated you to revisit that. That's my opinion on that. I just think that, I mean, if I'm sitting in the first selectman's office and the chief comes in and says, "You got to hear this," I'm listening. And if, even if the subject matter goes into something that I'm involved in litigation with, I'm going to be like, if this guy's in this room, chances are I really need to hear it. And I wouldn't delegate that to a subordinate. So, by saying I didn't know, that might relieve you of being accused in public, but you really had an obligation to know. So, I got to take exception to that excuse.
Yeah. I would point out that, A, the chief didn't come in and tell me I needed to hear this, and second, as we've seen in recent events, even the state's attorney has weighed in about the police not sharing any information from the criminal investigation with anybody outside the department.
She did say that after the fact, but the chief came into your office. Something happened where the chief said, "You got to know this." That's time where you just-
Mr. Bateson?
Whatever. We're not going to agree on this.
Yep. You weren't in the office, and that was not what was said.
Whatever. He had something he wanted to tell you, and you didn't want to hear it.
He did not say that.
That's my takeaway.
So, I mean, I have, I tried to take notes as quickly as I can, I would appreciate if you posted that online. I absolutely believe this is a complete lack of leadership on your part from the beginning. Now, you have done-
And, Mr. Timnack, I'm going to remind you that we run this meeting by Robert's rules. All right? And making those comments about another member of the board speak to the issue, if you would.
I'm addressing your comment.
Right. Speak to the issue, if you would.
Well, I will now move into it.
Making comments about another member of the board is not allowed under Robert's rules.
Okay.
It's your job performance. I'm allowed to criticize that. All right.
Not while you're sitting in a Board of Selectmen meeting, sir.
That's wrong. This is our board.
No, it's, and we run it by Robert's rule, sir.
Whatever. If I'm unhappy with your performance, I have every right to say that this meeting, don't tell me I can't.
It's according to Robert's rule, sir.
Okay. Whatever. All right. And, I mean, last night at the public comment meeting, when the gentleman who spoke before me, you gave such a runaround and a dance around his question, I mean, that's why I went to the microphone. I thought that was, that was just a complete skirt of what he was saying. You are relying on the fact that, you're racing to the fact that I knew nothing, I knew nothing. That's what you're trying, he knew nothing. But yet, he goes ahead and he requests, according to his timeline, which the chief contradicted, that he initiated this investigation. Well, if you're initiating the investigation, why wouldn't you want to follow up and get the conclusion of it? And the response is, "I didn't want to interfere in the investigation." Did you intend to interfere in the investigation? Because you either do interfere or you don't interfere. But by not accepting the information the chief was willing to give you, you failed to represent the residents of Fairfield. So if you want to comment on what your position was not interfering with the investigation, I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, very definitely. It's very important that it not be appeared to, I was looking at Julian coming back, and the investigation that I asked the chief to do was request to look at the Julian transport and dumping of material. And in looking at that, very simply, didn't want Julian to come back and be able to say that the first selectman had a political agenda, or manipulated this investigation, or focused on that. So, if I could finish, please. And very simply, the Julian pile operation had stopped at that point. That ended in December 13 of 2016, so this entire investigation is taking place after the fact, so that, and I didn't expect the investigation to take that long. It seemed a pretty simple issue, that we saw Julian come in and dump stuff, we tested it, it tested positive for PCBs. That I expected to be a fairly quick and straightforward investigation on that side.
So if you didn't want to interfere in the investigation, you started, because you were worried about what Julian was going to say, because we were suing them, which is remarkable to me. The second, the second point is, why would you let a top member of your administration go ahead and get the police investigation report, read the face sheets of the arrest warrant affidavit, read essentially the complete draft report, the complete report according to the chief, the unsigned report, and he comes in here last week and totally contradicts what the chief said at the Police Commission meeting last week? Why would that not be the level of interference, having your HR director do that work? Is that like, you want one degree of separation between your HR director and you to let the public know, "Hey, well, I'm not interfering, but my HR's got all the information?"
One, I did not approve the chief giving that to HR. He did that directly on his own, so I didn't know that till after that happened. That wasn't something that was approved by me or at that point. And so, no, I didn't know what was in that, and I think Mr. Hipson commented what he did last time. But if you want to ask the chief what was in that, or Mr. Hipson what was in that, that's why I think we invited him back today to talk.
Well, so I did ask the chief at the last, at the Police Commission meeting, because he did not come to our last meeting, and one of the, he answered a list of questions. I mean, in the context of it, when I read what was, you presented, chief, to Mr. Hipson, it was very clear, and as you said at the Police Commission meeting, he knew that the purpose of the investigation was about contaminant issues and about Mr. Bartlett. And if I do get into all this right now, with reference to materials being brought in by Julian, Scott Bartlett was quoted as saying something to the following, "I don't care where it comes in, as long as it goes out."
May I just be heard before he goes on reading this? Okay. Mr. Timnack, what are you reading from?
I'm reading a list of questions I submitted to the chief to answer.
But that wording comes from where?
The arrest warrant.
Okay, so you're reading from the arrest warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you know of your own knowledge that what's contained in that arrest warrant is true? Of your own knowledge? Yes or no? I'm asking, do you know that what's in that arrest warrant is true?
I'm going off of the arrest warrant, because two people have been arrested and fired, yes.
You didn't answer my question. Do you know of your own knowledge that what's contained in that arrest warrant is true? Yes or no?
I have to assume it is. Yeah.
So the answer is no. You don't know of your own knowledge, you're assuming that it's true. And yet, you're, you're reading it here like it is true. Quite frankly, let me, let me just tell you something, okay? Because it worries me. My job is to protect the town, okay? I watched the video of the last meeting where you were reading from that arrest warrant, and you were reading from it with the implication that what's contained in there is true, okay? That's what I saw from that meeting. Do you know what these warrants are designed to do?
Yeah, put enough, put enough information together to make a judgment of whether the individuals-
They are designed to persuade a judge to issue a warrant, okay? So how are they written? First of all, they're not complete, they're based on statements that may or not, may or may not be true. If there is more than one way of looking at an event, the police officer, and that's his job, I don't criticize him for that.
Can I have the police chief go to the microphone, please?
Let me finish, and then you can, then you can ask him, okay? They are designed to persuade a judge that there's probable cause, okay? Any lawyer that deals with arrest warrants and arrest warrant affidavits knows you don't necessarily believe what's in them. It's got to be proven in court. So when somebody sits as a town official, quite frankly, and reads from an arrest warrant, like everything that's in it is true, there's no exculpatory information in an arrest warrant. There's no information in the warrant application that might indicate that the person is not guilty. That's the way they're drawn. So quite frankly, it's irresponsible, I believe, for anybody to be reading from arrest warrants like they are the truth, okay? You have to be very careful about that. You make statements about people, and I watched the video, and quite frankly, I didn't see, there were some times when I thought you came close, but I don't think that there was a problem with the things you said, okay? But these people that are in that warrant are not public figures, they can be slandered, all right? And you have to be very careful about that.
Happen.
So if, well, so if you're going to do that, don't indicate that what's in there is necessarily true, because any lawyer that deals with them knows that it's not. Thank you.
Hey, can Chief Liddy? Do you want to invite the-
I do. Can I, can I have Chief Liddy, can I, Chief Liddy, come to the microphone?
Mr. Millington, you are not recognized, I'm going to ask you to hold your tongue, please.
Chris Liddy, Chief of Police.
Chief, thank you for coming here. Do you stand by the investigation report? Your officer, Hine, did?
I'd like to publicly say that Detective Sergeant Hine did an amazing job. Poured his heart and soul into it, lived the case for two years, and I think he did a great job.
Okay. So, and do you ordinarily share this type of investigation with an HR director?
I can't think of an occasion where there was a similar case such as this. This was very unique in, in I think, all of our careers.
And why did you share it with him?
I had concerns. I read the case for the first time, it took me a month to get up to speed. I had concerns about the content, some large, but some not so large that I may not have shared at the commission meeting. I was, I was concerned about the environment in, within DPW. I was concerned that there could be animosities taking place, and it was just a lot of information that I didn't feel comfortable holding for what would be, what I thought then would be weeks before anything happened with this case. Turned out to be more than eight months.
Right. So, I mean, you gave it to him because you wanted him to make a determination on whether action should be taken.
It was not in my purview to take any action, but, but I believe somebody had to know to address issues.
Right. And the first selectman didn't want to know?
I approached him, I had every intention of sharing it. He indicated to me that he did not want to interfere with the case, and I appreciated that position at the time. Interference was a concern. It was a concern of mine, I know it was a concern of yours. So I understood that.
So in that decision, basically put it on the shoulder of the HR director, who we've all seen the arrest warrant affidavits, to take that information, and as you, as you told us and as you've submitted to me, he had a relatively complete document, which he indicated was nothing like what is today at the last meeting. You contradicted that. I have statements from here, what was in the document, what was in, not in the document. And so, Mr. Lesser, whether it's true or not, the position I'm taking is that if I go back to the leadership comment, the buck was passed to the HR director to absorb this information and make a decision on what to do. He had all the, all the pieces right there. He even had a follow-up interview. You met, you met with Officer Hine to get more details on this, and nothing was done. Nothing was done until, until an article was published in the Fairfield Citizen.
I can, I can only answer the first part of that and say categorically that I put this on the HR director. I did it unilaterally, I did it without consulting anyone. I believed then, and I believe today, it was the right thing to do for the right reasons at the right moment in time.
Chief, I would have done the same thing. If I went to the boss and he didn't want to hear it, be like, "I can't sleep at night, I got, somebody's got to know." I totally get it.
And again, I appreciate both positions. I appreciated the fact that the first selectman didn't want to interfere, and I was very comfortable dealing with the HR director on- was very comfortable dealing with the HR director on a wide variety of the issues that were presented to me.
Since we've been hearing one side of this, might I ask Mr. Hipson come up and, and kind of fill us in on how things transpired from your perspective?
Emmett Hipson, Director of Human Resources. So in December, a package was dropped off in my office. I was not in there at the time. It was handed to me. I read the, I read the package, and I, I had some questions regarding the package, and then I met with Detective Hein, and then after that, I believe there were some, there were some changes, basically interviewed a couple of people that I had asked them to interview. And, and at that point, I made a decision on what I thought, what I should do. I went to Mr. Tetro. I asked him if he wanted me to address it with him. He indicated he did not. I did not push the issue. I didn't push the issue because I hear what the chief said. I'm not necessarily sure that I agree that there were issues that need to be, matter of fact, I'm sure I don't agree that there were issues that needed to be addressed immediately. And so, let me address what I mean by that. All right? And you said that there was, the report, I essentially had the same report. Well, that's not actually true. The face sheet I had had nothing to do with forgery. It had nothing to do with environmental crimes. What it had to do with was illegal dumping. I was aware of the illegal dumping, but quite frankly, the time that I got the report, which is December of 2018, the entire town was aware of illegal dumping, so there wasn't anything pressing there. The other thing it had to do with was trying to determine where that dumping came from. There was many paragraphs regarding conversations with our LEP, Sidney Knight, who witnessed the dumping, took the samples in November, and then comparing it to a site where they believed, the police believed that came from, and talking with their LEP. Again, not an issue that I felt was grave or needed to be addressed. I was not aware of anything regarding the issues or the material being brought out into the public. I was aware that they were concerned about what was in the pile, but again, at December of 18, we had already built the berm and tested it, so from an internal perspective, I wasn't concerned about that. There were three issues I were concerned about regarding an employee. Right? And those issues were the credit memo, where the payment of a subcontractor, and an email chain. So the question became, would I be able to address those issues with an ongoing police matter without addressing outside entities? And the reality is, I probably could have done it with one of them, but with two of those issues, I would have needed to ask, get involved in interviewing the same people that the police department were currently interviewing, and/or the state of Connecticut as regarded to some of the inspection issues that were going on. So I didn't feel the need to press the issue on that, number one. Number two, the chief had advised me that he thought it was going to be fairly quick. I think he even said it this evening, that he felt the turnaround was going to be pretty quick, that he was getting ready to bring it to court and thought that it would be signed by the court. So at that point, I did not believe it was imperative that I make Mr. Tetro listen to what I had to say. I did believe an employee would be disciplined, but at that time, again, there was one employee. Couple of months later, I got, you know, I talked to the chief about it. He told me to shred what I had, that I was completely changing. So that was the process by which I had the report, and that was the way in which I handled it.
Mr. Bateson?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ed. Yeah, quick thing.
Yes, sir.
In this December 2018 timeframe, if knowing, did you talk to anyone else? I mean, I would have, I would have called Stanton Lesser if that crossed my desk, if I was HR director, like, whoa. I mean, I know you're a lawyer, but at the same time, he's town attorney. At that time, I'd be like, look, I just went to the boss. He doesn't really, I understand what he's saying. I don't want to hear this, but you need to look at this. Am I in the right by doing what I'm doing?
I'm not sure if I talked to Stanton, in all honesty. I don't, I, I, I know I didn't go outside of that. I'm not sure if I talked to Stanton or did not. I, I don't have.
Well, he was aware you read the report.
He was aware I read the report. I definitely advised him that I had a report. I'm not sure if I shared the report with him, or if I just told him that I had the report and that I had read it, and that Mike had asked not to, you know, we didn't want the town to be seen as interfering, and that was pretty much the end of it. Again, I don't remember at that point, the conversation, much more than that.
I don't remember, I don't think that I spoke to Emmett about it, but in retrospect, had he come to me, it's very clear what I would have told him. There was an ongoing police investigation. Warrants had not been issued at that point. We didn't know whether they were going to or not. To go off and start conducting an investigation could really be deemed as interfering with that investigation, and I would have cautioned him against doing anything. It could wait. Okay? Like, all this stuff was in the past, and I, it's my belief, if there's a police investigation going on, you don't do anything to interfere with that investigation. You let them conduct their work, let them make their findings if a warrant's issued, you know, and, and nothing really happened till after the warrants came down. So that's what happened.
Well, to that point, and at the first meeting we had in August, I went out of my way to clarify that there's two separate moments, there's, are two separate things going on. There's the civil case, and there's a criminal case. And our attorneys, Hoffman and Katz, sent us a letter saying, don't talk about the criminal case. I completely identified the criminal case. So when we were in executive session on January 3rd, now I can, because we discussed the criminal case.
You can't talk about executives.
We did not go into, we, we had this discussion. We did not go into executive session to discuss the criminal case. We went into, we went in to discuss the civil case. Okay? And at that, in that discussion, I asked if you've read the report. And you indicated to me, after you said, don't answer that, you indicated to me that you had.
I read the report in December when I got it. I don't think I've, I think I changed that story.
No, the idea, initially, you didn't read it. So the idea, the idea.
Initially, I didn't read it.
Initially, there was no knowledge of this going on. This administration had no knowledge of it, and I consider you part of the administration. I also consider the two people who've been arrested part of this administration. But the idea that you guys weren't aware of this in December is, is astounding to me, because it was conveyed to us. So I want to let, let you know that.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that. I would, in December, I definitely had received the report. I'm not sure when in December. It was probably mid-December. I received the report. I believe I read it the day I got it. It might have been a day later. I brought it home. It wasn't in my office when I read it. I read it at my house, and then took notes that I've, of issues that I felt were of concern. I brought the report back in, sealed it back up. I put it in a folder on my, or a accordion on my, on my desk until I was told to shred it. So, and I think.
You had follow-up meetings with Sergeant Hein.
So I did have follow-up meetings with Sergeant Hein.
Yeah, so don't, don't minimize it that you read it. You put it on your desk in an accordion folder, and like, you just, you know, waited, waited to be.
I don't think, I think I said I had.
You just, you just minimized it by waiting for instructions from the chief to shred it, but we're, we're now regressing. We are. I agree with that, Stan. We're regressing here. Can I talk about the emails from Dana Carey here?
If you'd like.
I would, because you, today, you indicated to the Board of Finance earlier that you misspoke, you used that phrase. Today, you said, I regretfully answered the question too fast. All right? So that's two incidences where you've either jumped the gun or misinformed the public of what, what occurred. If I were, if I were to give you another email, which I read today, which's from another person regarding another property, which was sent to you, which you responded to, I'd like to read this into the record if I can. Okay? This was, this was sent to you from Joe Michelangelo on April 22nd, 2015. "We have problems with the quality of the topsoil that we've used at Old Field, Burrows, and McKinley Soccer Field. This material was spread mainly in the bare spots and the worn spots. There are impurities, as Sue Kay describes below, on the material we put down. We first got wind of it Monday. We got rained out yesterday, and will be scurrying to get the fields ready for opening day of the Rec Soccer Leagues this Saturday. This is largely the same thing that occurred with the topsoil at Gould Manor that Dana Carey pointed out. We'll get to the bottom of it and find out why it's happening, but our first priority is getting the fields ready for this weekend, and then to make sure this doesn't happen again in the future." And that was sent from Joe Michelangelo to you. And you responded. You said, Joe, thanks for jumping on this. This appears to be a very significant issue which needs to get addressed ASAP. As you point out, we need to understand what's happened and to stop any recurrence. Thanks, Mike. So in 2015, if you had done exactly as you instructed, or as you indicated you would have, we would have been dealt with this in 2015.
Actually, there are a number of emails around that, and that was obviously back in 2015, which is four and a half years ago or so. But as you go back, and, and I did went back and pulled all the emails to, to see, remind myself what was taking place through all that. We actually, it was reported to me that was a responsibility or the error of one individual in Public Works that, that caused that to happen.
So, but you didn't, you didn't, yourself, you didn't put the pattern together that this is now two constituents complaining of the same thing as your Public Works director has indicated? And, I mean, there's, there's, it's.
One was, one, one dealt with a construction project on sidewalks, and the other was on some field issue that was identified to be one person that was responsible for that, not a systematic use of this fill material throughout the town. So no, it wasn't.
And again, never, where'd the fill come from? Joe, Joe never, Joe never told you the fill's coming from the Julian asphalt pile? We're taking it there? We shouldn't be putting this on our town fields?
He did not.
He didn't, okay. And you didn't ask that?
At the time, that was early on in, in the Julian taking over, they were not really on anybody's radar, and the pile itself wasn't on anybody's radar. We had been addressing fields and maintaining fields for 20, 30 years, and, you know, when it was identified that, in one case, it was said as a bad batch, in the other case, it was said as, as one employee. No, I did not connect the dots on those two.
All right. So I just, I'm curious why you didn't include this email in all the packages of the emails which we have on record on that fill pile website?
There's a host of emails that are not included on the emails of the fill pile website.
Well, in the interest of transparency.
Over four or five years.
Can we get them on the website? Because that would help identify when we knew what, right? Stan, what do you think the point is? I mean, you're sitting there, you're.
I think the point is the beat up on Mike, quite frankly. That's what the point is.
I think the point is that the town is getting misinformation.
That's a poor attitude. What's done is done. How dare you say that? Come on, that minimizes every, how, what's done is done? That's a cavalier attitude.
Yeah. Let's, let's calm down, and let's take one person at a time. Mr. Timniak, I think you still had the floor.
I do. So we want to go back to December 16, as you said in your thing, when you got the positive samples from the Julian fill pile. Did anything leave the fill pile after December 16?
Only the, the fill that was identified and profiled is containing the PCBs and the lead, and that was done under the guidance of our LEP, following a plan that was approved by DPW.
Okay. So my point is that we knew enough to say, hey, listen, this can't go out anymore. We can't go out anymore. We can't put this all over town. But at that moment, when you made the decision not to let it go out, not to let it leave the property, you didn't turn back the clock and say, hey, wait a second, where have we been putting this? Where is this in town? I mean, you have emails about where it is in town because you have, you have the correspondence, and you knew that you shut down the site, and it wasn't going anywhere, but yet, again, in 2016, we don't want to go ahead and start the process of testing and, and figuring out where this is in town. We didn't want to start the process of cleaning it up then.
Mr. Timniak, taking that one step at a time. One, when we shut it down, we shut it down specifically to stop any of the PCB material coming out there so we could profile that, make sure that was handled appropriately. We kicked Julian out at the same time. Because we started the profiling, we're looking at, at that point, to build the berm surrounding that with that material. There wasn't any more material moving out of that, at that point. In terms of it being known to use, I didn't know that, and nobody had identified at that point, that the material at Gould Manor came from this same pile. Nobody identified that the glass on the fields came from, filled from the same pile.
And they didn't identify where it came from at all. And that's what I'm saying is, hey, listen, they're the pieces. For those even home, they're the pieces. Nobody identified it.
Mr. Timniak, those were two incidents, one that was resolved, according to both DPW and the resident brought it up. Second, that it was, was resolved by Parks and Rec in terms of the glass that was put on a field was removed, so those fields could be back in play. So those two issues were resolved back in 2015.
Okay. So, and just go with another thing you said, because you're, you're taking credit for things which, thank God, thank God the Fairfield Citizen published. But when you put Bartlet on administrative leave, why don't we remind everybody that during that interim, you promoted Joe Michelangelo to fulfill his duties until the Fairfield Citizen published a week later the article that he too had been arrested? And then, and then we had to put him on leave. So in that interim week, knowing that information, because it was included, or enough information was included at the arbitration hearing, that Joe Michelangelo was not going to have clean hands on this, and had done things which was a violation of the employee conduct laid out in the town charter, you actually promoted him. You actually promoted him to fulfill the duties of the guy who was placed on administrative leave. I didn't hear that in your statement.
Yeah. Joe Michelangelo, A, wasn't promoted. Scott Bartlet worked for him, not the other way around. So he was assuming those duties. It had nothing to do with the Fairfield Citizen article. It had everything to do with the information that came out of both the search warrants and the arrest warrants as we went through those. And I think that if you're going to make those statements and saying it's based on the Fairfield Citizen article, that's just not correct in terms of, you have no idea what was taking place on the inside back here, so I'm.
Yeah. Well, we, we discussed it relatively quickly in, at our August meeting. So that's what I, I based it, and again, you didn't challenge me that it was the Citizen, it wasn't the Citizen article in August, so you're, you're, you're doing it today.
Yeah, I just can't correct you every time you're wrong.
Well, and I can't correct you every time you're wrong either, and, and it's a mounting The Oversight Committee you want to put together, we're touting this as transparency and oversight. And I have to just start off at the beginning. I think that that's what we get elected to do. We are on the Board of Selectmen. It is outlined in the town charter that this is an Oversight Committee. I want residents to feel free to email us their concerns, and I want the residents to know that we have the confidence that we're going to take their emails, that we're going to follow up with the departments, to make sure what their concerns are, are being heard. Okay? So if we create this committee, my question is, do the residents stop emailing us and then start emailing the committee of five to seven volunteers?
We have a very effective system of constituent emails and Q-Alerts that's been set up and working for a number of years now. And we use that to track resident emails to make sure that we follow up on those, and those get right out to different departments to make sure those get addressed. In this case, the idea is to take a look at environmental safety, which seems to be growing in a number of areas, and this might be, because Public Works is one of our departments that doesn't have a volunteer board overlooking, overseeing what they do. They're not like the police with a police commission, fire with a fire commission, conservation, even with the conservation commission, Parks and Rec with a Parks and Rec commission. So it, it seemed to both be a good idea, and based on a number of suggestions out there from the public, that we take a look at this. In fact, this may be a permanent commission we put in, especially if we have increased concerns based on everything from rising sea levels to other environmental issues that are out there that, that got raised, as I said. The idea of the dredging at Jennings Beach, are we going to be testing? If you'll let me finish, please. The, as that type of issue comes up, the idea that we have a group that can help direct that and make sure. that and make sure that that gets properly directed to a department to answer that and provide that kind of transparency and public oversight, I think is a good idea.
I'm sorry, I'm thoroughly confused right now. Environmental Safety Committee, I thought, was meant to deal with the crisis at hand. You're making it sound like it's something to oversee DPW operations in the future.
No, I talked about it right from the start of being something that because a number of the issues being raised are not attributable to the Julian pile, they're larger environmental issues for our town, that we should get visibility on that and input on that to make sure that we're dealing with those properly. The Julian, I think, we are moving forward on. But, and so having...
All right, that's not the flavor I'm getting from the media on this, though. It sure sounded to me like when you rolled this out earlier this week, that this was specific to address Julian and what's going on.
That was the initial start, but right from the start, I mentioned, I believe it was in the news articles, but if not, I can write this up in more detail for you.
Yeah, well, you know, if you want to form a committee, I'd like to see a charge.
Yep, that's...
You know, so I...
You also wanted to hear about the committee, so we have a chance to, that's why I'm proposing it, bring it here.
If that, if your intention is to have some sort of Oversight Committee down the road that wants to supervise DPW, that's something that can be discussed in the future. I'm concerned about the crisis at hand, and, you know, basically the crisis in government that we have and how we're going to get through this and move forward. I think that's paramount.
With respect to the Julian issue and the fill, that's why we jumped on that with the Director of Department of Health. That's also why we brought in Ty and Bond. That's also why we, DEEP, and then the State Department of Health, to make sure that we are testing the fields appropriately, testing them as quickly as we can, and getting focused on remediation where it needs.
Where are we going with Parks and Rec? I heard Parks and Rec voted they wanted to test all the fields. That's not before, so it hasn't been. What's going on with that?
Mr. Calabrese wasn't available this week. He'll be at our next meeting to present that to us.
Okay. So how are we going to move forward with what we plan on doing? Last night, I watched that public forum. There does seem to be a popular sentiment out there that there's a lack of faith in the administration. Right now, it's you managing the department heads that are involved and Ty and Bond. I think that, what I thought this Environmental Safety Committee was, is they were going to take over that. That's what I thought. So I was starting to think along the lines of, to what Chris's point was, is if there's going to be an accountability factor, I don't want to pass the buck to an appointed commission. I think the buck should stop with elected officials at this table. So I think, I think we should be, this board should be bought into that loop, that this should be a committee of three running this, running Ty and Bond, running the department heads, talking to Parks and Rec, and just elevate our awareness in this to try to address the public trust issue. That's me.
In terms of the committee, it was, is basically brought in, the Department of Health, Public Works are still going to be doing the work they're doing now, because somebody's got to actually work with Ty and Bond, remediate the fields, and take it from there. This was a step towards improved transparency and making sure that everybody saw what was coming in. And that was the proposal.
All right. I got to ask about this meeting that's going on now at Sacred Heart. Why didn't your office talk about this meeting with the State's Attorney's Office? I thought that was a pretty relevant occurrence in town that the townspeople would want to hear about. Why didn't your office promote that?
I thought we did, on some of that. But we didn't hear from the State's Attorney on it and get the details on it. When we followed up with them, they specifically said they wanted to leave the town out of loop. I'm not quite sure the logic in that, but that was their answer.
All right. I just think that was poorly handled. I think you really should have put it out there that, you know, this is your opportunity to talk to them. It looks poorly that the State's Attorney is in town, giving a meeting, an update on this, and crickets out of Town Hall on it.
Well, I think it's definitely unfortunate, and I do not understand the logic of the State's Attorney not informing the town, having us set it up, and giving us all the information on that. The information was handed out through social media and not through Town Hall. And they really didn't have a good explanation for that when we talked to them.
I mean, to that point, that's the way you tell us about meetings, through social media? I mean, we, through the press. I mean, I found out about this committee you wanted to put together through the two reporters who called me. I found out about the public comment last night through social media, not through an invitation from the First Selectmen saying, hey, I'd appreciate if the Board of Selectmen would attend this. We didn't, I didn't know about the meetings in August. You know, I found out through its social media.
You should get on the First Selectmen Updates list through our webpage, so that those will definitely come out, and you'll get that and anything else that comes out.
And the same...
You'll let me finish, please. I'll let you finish. Practically speaking, yeah, social media is definitely one of the ways we use to do that, to get that out. And in terms of the State's Attorney, no, I'm at a loss. I'm frankly appalled that the State's Attorney wouldn't involve the town in publicizing that and coordinating that meeting with us to maximize the participation in that. And frankly, they wouldn't have scheduled on a night that we have a Board of Selectmen meeting, and wouldn't be able to keep, that would delay us, if not keep us, from attending that.
What do we got going forward here? I got to tell you, what I see is pressing issues. I still see, I think we've tested somewhat, somewhere upwards of 50 fields, or 50 sites, 50 fields. It looks like we have about nine hotspots. I'm assuming Ty and Bond is developing a remediation plan for those spots. I anticipate this lit, I'm not going to say, I hope this list doesn't grow after Parks and Rec, you know, starts to test their field. But, you know, we still have the testing we have to handle, the remediation, and also too, I mean, I don't want to, I still got that 60,000 cubic yards down there, an unpermitted landfill. I mean, we got to start pounding on the state to permit this landfill.
I think that's what, with respect to the landfill, that's what Brian Carey is doing. The state doesn't seem to be in an urgent rush to do that, but Brian has been working to meet with them, and I think he's been confronted with some vacation schedules and some other things at the state level that hasn't. But he is working to get that done, and feels very confident that it will get done on a timely basis. But we are dealing with the state, and we work on their time period. In terms of the testing, vast majority of the fields are coming back, are coming back at a level that, below the residential standard. Even though the ones that are marginally above it, we may not be required to remediate, but we are going above and beyond. So that's been our position from the start. There isn't any level in between. There's the commercial, industrial, and the residential. So that cleaning it up to the residential level is literally the only standard we have. So we're doing that. We will, we announced 20 more fields. We're putting together a program to test those.
Who's putting together? You and Ty and Bond?
Ty and Bond is, yes.
On consultation with you or the Director of Health?
Well, Ty and Bond puts together the schedule. They were basically following their recommendations, but, so working with the Department of Health to make sure that we're informed of that, but...
When's this hotline going into effect? This has got to be the third meeting I've heard about this hotline, and it's still not up and running.
Actually, it is up and running. We had our first meeting with the department heads this morning. Mr. Hipson, would you like to come up and fill us in on that?
So had a meeting today. We rolled out the employee hotline. The site's been tested. I sent a test out myself, received it. So what happens is, the number can be sent, the number can be called, or an email can be sent to a third-party source. Third-party source asks, well, it's kind of a drop-down menu, asks a lot of questions. Individual has the right to make a complaint about a number of different areas, quite frankly, any area. And they have the option of providing contact information or keeping it anonymous. Email gets sent to me. And then I have, I can either call the person up if they give me their contact information, or I can respond back with what action we've taken from, on the website, so the person can actually go back in, get a case number, go back in and see what was happening. We are, rolled it out today to the department heads. I plan on going out to the departments, meeting with the employees, and then, once that's up and running for a couple of weeks, plan on putting a video out online so that the public will have access to the number and the email address. That's kind of the process right now. So again, we started with...
What information are you going to get? Are you going to get a, an anonymous complaint? Is that what you're going to see?
Yeah, I will get a, so the complaint that I received, again, I typed it, so it comes to a whistleblower hotline. So Dave set up, sorry, Dave Kelly, the IT Director, set up a dummy account under my Outlook account number. And so I get a, Lighthouse is the name of the company that does it. They give me a Lighthouse reports. It just tells me that a complaint was filed. It gives me the information that the complaint's about. Again, at this point, we don't have any limits on what can be complained about. So it could be an ethics complaint. It could be a sexual harassment complaint. It could be pretty much any complaint that comes in, that someone wants to write about. And then, basically, I have, you know, the basic pertinent information I need to begin an investigation. And then, as I said, I can either update the person or create a memo to file and respond back to the website. The thought is that there would be a request to the Board of Ethics, Ethics Commission to see if they want to oversee it, in which case they would be copied in on all of the complaints that come in. The general handling, general thought is that if it has to do with finance or fraud, it would be referred up to the Finance Department for an investigation, and the other employment-related matters would stay in my office. Again, if the Ethics Commission takes charge of it, it won't accept that. They'll be copied in. I anticipate giving a report to the Ethics Commission once a quarter. You know, that'll be worked out as we determine how many complaints come in and the scope of the complaints. Yes, sir.
Where should complaints about you go? I mean, if you...
Honestly, the complaints about me should probably go to the First Selectmen, or depending on the type of complaint, I mean, probably should go to the First Selectmen. If it's an ethics issue, it should go to the Ethics Commission.
So if you're filtering the stuff when it comes in, and it's a complaint about you, who, what's the, what's the, what's the backdrop on that?
Unfortunately, I mean, unless you take it outside of the town completely, which most ethics hotlines do have an internal employer control over it, you know, there will be, it will come to me. But forget, it'll be anonymous, but it'll come to the Ethics Commission if they go that route.
I think that's why we talked about getting the Ethics Commission involved, so there is that oversight on that.
I'd like to have public comment on this.
All right. Yes, thank you. Any members from the public would like to comment? Okay. And again, we just asked that it's public comment, and that we keep the comments to two minutes or less, if you would.
Fine, Dana Carey. So, number one, if transparency is your priority, I request that you step aside and allow the two selectmen to take the lead until the situation is fully resolved. Because transparency has not been what I have observed from your communication with the town. That's point one. Point two, concerning the hotline. I've seen mention of concern about operations with DPW. I'd like to know what organizational and HR adjustments are planned to address the current procedures, and I'd also like to know what the current disciplinary procedures are.
Okay, thank you. It's public comment.
I understand.
Arthur Hirsch, One Oak Bluff Road, Fairfield. Mr. Tetro, the contract, or so-called contract that I saw on the social media that you signed with Julian, I saw your name and I saw the purchasing agent. I didn't see any figures plugged in on any of the lines in the contract. How is the town's insurance company going to be looking at this? If they shouldn't fulfill their part of the bargain and pay for damages that we have incurred, what's going to ultimately happen with this pile? We're going to have to eventually get rid of it. Who's going to pay? Has this been, has a game plan been set up yet?
Again, this is public comment.
Okay.
Jamie Millington, 245 Onco Road. First of all, I just have to start by saying that Attorney Lesser's comments about Detective Sergeant Hind writing a warrant and signing an arrest warrant affidavit with information that may not be true, that he's writing it to a judge to convince a judge, that's not what police officers do when they sign an arrest warrant affidavit. They're signing that everything in there is based on the information they developed over a thorough investigation, and that it's true and accurate to the best of their knowledge, and they swear to that under oath. So to make any assertion that all attorneys think that that's not the case when a police officer signs a warrant is a disgraceful comment to make against law enforcement. Now, back to this issue. From, just from, I'm not going to go into all the soil, because everybody is talking about that. In 2009 to 2011, there was another investigation into public corruption in this town with Scott Bartlet. The investigator from the Chief State's Attorney's Office investigated and had submitted a warrant for larceny I, defrauding the public trust, larceny II, defrauding the public trust, and tampering with a witness. That warrant was never signed, and nobody knows what happened to it. In December of 2011, that investigator wanted to meet with you, Mr. Tetro, to discuss that case and to discuss the charges that were being filed. You had a law firm send him an email or a memo saying that you would not meet with him then. So you didn't want to hear about it then. When the police chief came to you now, you don't want to hear about it now. It's your job to know. It's your job to know if fraud is being perpetrated against this town, or if public corruption's going. You don't wait till the end of a two-year investigation to say, okay, now, now maybe I should find out. So when this investigation goes on, you know, we're led to believe that Mr. Tetro launched an investigation. He's a complainant in an investigation against fraud in the town of Fairfield. He tells Chief McNamara, I don't want to hear anything about this until this is done, is what we're led to believe. During the course of that investigation into fraud, it pivots into a public corruption case. You're telling me McNamara didn't come to you and say anything? I mean, I find that hard to believe. And then, when the new chief gets in, he comes to your office with the police report and arrest warrant affidavit. You don't even want to hear a first word out of his mouth on what's going on. The HR director, whose job it is to oversee human resources, reads this document, this extensive document that's the basis of an arrest warrant application that's already in. And he decides, you know, it's not so bad. They're just felony charges against a department head. Let's wait seven months, take action, to see if a warrant gets signed. If this isn't leadership from behind and total and utter mismanagement of the town, and I could go on and on and on about Dana's emails and the other emails, and how you didn't recall, this and that, in 2016, you find out that the soil that was on those fields, according to the newest emails, were from the Julian pile. And when you find out that they were spread on these properties in '14 and '15, and now you find out the pile's contaminated, you never order any testing, you just let it go by the wayside. In all the years I've been involved in Fairfield politics, I have never seen anything like this. And I speak, and people are like, well, he holds this position and he holds that position. I do, because I care about my community, like you guys do. And we have decided to serve the community, and we have, we are from different... And we have decided to serve the community, and we have, we are from different political parties, but we have run for political office, we have served in various political offices, been appointed to different things, and that shouldn't be held against us. Because we're the very few people in this town who will step up when asked to serve. And when we question things, and all of a sudden, you're tacked on social media, he's just saying this because he's a Republican, or he's in this position. It's ridiculous, and no wonder why nobody wants to serve. But there has to be people like us that are going to ask the tough questions. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Jan Reber, Beaumont Street. I'm an independent voter, so I'm not here as your adversary, Mr. First Selectman. Last night, the very first public comment that was made, the woman said, trust has been broken. My trust has been broken in Joe Michelangelo, a guy I worked with and respected. My trust has been broken in you as well. I want to just give you two examples that concern me. In 2016, a Beach area resident came to you and said, Scott Bartlett's son works for Julian. You told that person, go to the Police Department and tell them. I believe you've never followed up with that on the Police Department, you never followed up with the person who told you about the complaint, you never went to HR and said, hey, we may have a personnel issue here, you didn't go to Joe Michelangelo and say, hey, did your subordinate, you know, you have a subordinate who has a son working for Julian? You just dropped the whole thing. That was back in 2016. That was irresponsible, in my opinion. Secondly, you read a memo, a draft memo written in January 2019 by your consultants, Osprey. In that memo, Osprey recommended or suggested to Joe, he could lie to deep about the fact that the berm was already built. He said, Joe, you don't have to tell them the berm's already been built. That would give me great concern about the integrity of Osprey. Yet, you have taken an Osprey memo at the end of August and circulated it to attack one of the arrest warrants, and defend Osprey and defend the town. That's really irresponsible, in my opinion, and I've lost trust with you over those issues. Next, your, your point about having a, an environmental issue public committee. At the la, I think it's a monumental dodge on your part. At the last Board of Selectmen meeting, you told Selectmen Bateson that he and the WPCA were responsible for the unexpected costs on the three projects. You said, man, it's you, it's you and the WPCA. WPCA relies on information from your staff, a staff that's supposed to be supervised by and responsible to you. Who would want to serve on an environmental committee where the next time there's a controversy, you're going to yell at them and say, hey, it's on you, why didn't you find out? They'd only get information from your employees. We need to know more about what you knew, when you knew it, and what you should have known, because I don't think it's all been out there yet. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. That item is done. Next item up is item 10, private executive session on pending litigation.
Can you, first off, you guys put the, do 40 seconds.
Yep.
This is one, it's still here, so.
Do you want to, do you want to take the item off the table and put it back before us now, or wait till after private executive session?
Well, I want a caucus prior to that, I don't-
Do you want a caucus now, or after private executive session?
I suppose we can caucus. And what are your thoughts?
Fine, five-minute caucus.
Okay. We'll take a pause for caucus, and we'll come back and then bring that item off the table, if that's the desire of this board.
Okay.
After, looking at all the information I received, I do think it's something we should vote today. I do want to take Mr. Mayor on one of the options. I would like to recommend the WPCA pay for this in its entirety. When I take the numbers for the microgrid, which we could potentially lose, the 1.3, I feel like, you know, adding the 1.6 additional is something, just the math, the math makes us do it. I do wish that this hadn't come to us at the, legitimately, the very last minute. I wish that this was presented to us throughout the summer, when more information was had. It's unfortunate it wasn't, and it's unfortunate that we're taking this up now.
All right. If I understand you correctly, in order to do what you want, we can pass number five, and either vote down or take no action on item six. Does that accomplish what you want?
I got to look at five and six.
It looks like, from my reading of item number six, we can just change the wording, alter the, where it says, what has requested the town pay half, we just eliminate that, the WPCA is paying for everything. That's what it says to me.
Okay.
Right, right, Bob, it looks like we can just wait, do some wordsmithing to get around this.
If you only want the town to pay the original $386,000 that the town committed to pay in the original authorization, then you would just vote down number six. Because number six is-
Okay.
Because then what stands is what we passed previously, and this just increases the overall, no, item five just increases the overall appropriation in bond or authorization is 7.4 and change.
Okay, I get it. So we're going to vote down six. Five, though, for the record, though, I don't have a bond resolution.
Do you, yes, you do.
It was, it was in.
And the other thing you might, I wasn't quite understanding, Ms. Timmyak's comment about, we saved the 1.3 million dollars.
Versus not doing it.
You know, it was, you know, you might want to maybe pay a portion of that to the, or not, I don't-
I'm just taking one of the options you gave us.
Yeah, yeah, the option is you can do 50/50, zero, or, or 25/75, or any, any-
Any percentage split.
Any percentage split you want.
Yeah. I know.
And I just didn't, I didn't, just didn't understand, because you mentioned that 1.3 million, I just didn't understand what you were saying, whether it was-
So, might I suggest, since the item's been moved forward before us, why don't we vote on item five, and then if we want to discuss item six?
Sure.
What's it got to do with that? Is that okay? So we get at least one of these done?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm not marrying the town to the bond that we're approving in five. The bond resolu, we're approving the bond resolution, okay? I'm not bond counsel, and it's three hours into the meeting, and I'm trying to interpret this document. And in here, I'm going to vote on that the town of Fairfield is not paying anything above our original appropriation, that the WPCA is taking up the cost of debt, servicing the debt on this bond. That's my intent in item five.
Then perhaps-
Okay, you might want to do, let me, let me suggest something, I'm just looking at this quickly. If you turn to the second page of your agenda.
Agenda, page two.
Page two. Whereas the town water pollution control authority has agreed to pay for the cost of project and debt service on the bonds authorized by, you know, just stop right there, right? Whereas the town water pollution control authority has agreed to pay for the costs of the project, and the debt service on the bonds auth, that would be authorized by the amended resolution, and stop right there, and then say, resolved, therefore, that a bond resolution entitled be hereby adopted.
All right, that, yeah, that was my original suggestion.
Yeah. We're going to have, we're going to have to make a few changes on that, because that's something in each paragraph, we have to change.
But I think that's the way we should do it.
Okay. Why don't we vote on item five now, so that's out of the way, and then we'll go back and make the modifications to six, if that's okay with the board?
Sure.
No, that, what I was suggesting was a modification to five.
Oh, God.
No, no, because you, I was addressing Mr. Bateson's issue. You want to be very clear that you're not on the hook for any of this.
Town of Fairfield isn't WPCA.
Correct.
Yeah. We're on for our original 3, 300.
Correct. Therefore, what I'm suggesting is, you introduce the five, instead of starting out resolved, right? You start out, whereas, the town's water pollution control authority has agreed to pay for the cost of the project, and the debt service on, on bonds authorized for the project, therefore, resolved, that a bond resolution entitled blank, blank, blank is hereby adopted.
Yeah, but that wouldn't cover the fact that we currently have agreed to pay some portion of that. That would make it sound like we're not going to pay any portion of it, and reverse our-
Okay, then you'd say, has agreed to pay the cost with the exception of $386,000.
Oh, good Lord.
Or you, or you, like- Basically, I'm just, I was just addressing what you might want to do, to be totally clear, but the bottom line is, what five does is, allows me to write checks to pay the bill.
Here's-
You can just, so you can just pass five, I was just trying to be extra cautious-
Yeah.
For, for Selectmen Bateson.
No.
But so, if you just pass five as is, and then, six, you just, you just say no.
Why don't, why don't we pass five-
Do a yes and a no.
With the following addition at the end, which is, the town hereby agrees to pay only the $386,000 that was previously approved as a portion of this appropriation.
Do you have the exact number, Bob? Is it in one of these documents?
Yes, sir.
Then we can, then if we add that into five-
It's 386.
386.
Yeah, the idea is that we can then just pass five and not touch six, and that limits our exposure very clearly.
All right, you want to, you want to make that motion?
Yeah.
To amend the, item number five?
Yes. Adopted, and the town agrees to pay only the $386,000 previously agreed to as part of this appropriation.
Did you get that, Sheila? I'll second that.
All right. So, that amendment is before us. Any other discussion on the amendment? Any public comment on the amendment, and the amendment only? On the amendment.
So I'm Dick Mahusky, I'm the chairman of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. I just want to comment that, as, as I read the bond resolution that was in the packet for tonight, and then when somebody read the minutes from the WPCA, with the minutes said that they requested the town pay half of the remaining debt, my read of the bond resolution was that it asked that the town pay half of the debt service, I believe those words were in there. So, I would just caution that, whatever, whatever the proper format of the bond resolution is, that should be resolved, maybe not thinking on our collective feet, but by sitting down and looking at the words properly.
Thank you.
Aye.
Any other public comment? Then back to the board. And perhaps, before we go back to what, Mr. Mayor?
You don't remember putting that in the bond resolution, and relooking at it, it's been a while since we've been there. I understand, the bond resolution says-
Mr. Mayor, you really have to speak from the mic.
The bond resolution, number one, is recommended by, Board Finance, the town of Fairfield, hereby appropriate the money. You have to appropriate the money, whoever, wherever the money comes from, you have to appropriate the money. The finance, in lieu of tax, therefore, is recommended by Board Finance, the town of Fairfield, may borrow some, not to exceed. Okay, that says, Board Selectmen, Treasurer, town, hereby adopt the committee with full power. I don't know where the gentleman sees that.
I don't have a copy.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what?
Can we just vote our wishes and have bond counsel iron out the language?
Yes, you can definitely do that. I'll definitely take care of it, but it's not, I don't think it's in there, but if it's in there, it'll be changed.
Yeah.
Because the, because the resolution will rule.
Yeah. Instead of thinking on our feet, like Mr. Mahusky pointed out, I, I say we, we vote what our best interest or intent is, we have right now. Refer to bond counsel if there's any editorial corrections they need to make before it moves on.
Any reconciliation.
Or any reconciliation they need to make. Our wishes have been expressed on the record.
All right. Did we vote on the amendment yet?
No.
I forget.
No, I don't think we did.
All right, so, all right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the item as amended stands before us. Any further discussion?
I have none.
Yeah, I, this project was a shock to me, the escalation in cost. I, I really, I'm voting for this, and putting it on the WPCA, but I really think that, you know, a new DPW director needs to come in here and look at what we're doing down there, and work in concert with the treatment plant staff, and, you know, I, again, I, I can't risk losing this grant, and I'm going under my professionals that I'm, that we retain to, that are saying, we're going to lose it, but, you know, it's just, I don't like doing business this way, but I'm going to support it.
No argument, I think we all feel that way. Any comments from the public on the item as amended?
Can I consult my lawyer on that first? I'm not sure it's on the item as amended.
Well, that's the item before us, I'd ask you to-
I'm only kidding.
Okay.
I'm trying to inject some humor into a very tense environment. I'm not succeeding, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Reber. And we appreciate the attempt.
You know, very early in this meeting tonight, a town employee said, quote, "God knows what's coming next." And you guys, I'll tell you what's coming next, and I'm like, God, there's two more WC, PC, big projects that are profoundly over budget, that you don't know about yet, only know about in broad terms. One of which is the pumping station at Sacred Heart, which hasn't been put out to bid yet, which if it's not done, if that project isn't done by September of 2020, students are not going to be able to flush their toilets, and they're going to come knocking on your Why is that going on? Why are the three biggest non-school projects in Fairfield unknown to you guys? It seems to me that our director of Public Works, whose office is nine, was a 92nd walk from the First Selectmen, somehow, there was no proper project management. Somebody wasn't asking the right questions. I'm not allowed to ask you any questions tonight, I have some written ones here I'm going to give to you. I don't understand why our First Selectmen wasn't meeting with Joe Michelangelo on a regular basis and saying, are we on budget? Are we on time for these projects? I understand from employees at Public Works, that they were furiously trying to value engineer these projects, to get the cost down before they revealed it to anybody. And that may be very consistent with the allegation against Joe Michelangelo, that he was falsifying time records on the berm, that there was an effort to minimize costs, minimize costs because they didn't want the First Selectmen to know, who knows why. But to me, this is an example of really poor management, that all three of our biggest non-school projects are profoundly over budget, and none of you seem to know anything about it. That's disgraceful. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
I'm Dick, I'm Dick Mahusky, and live in Colonial Drive, and I'm the chairman of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, and I was going to encourage you to pass the, and approve the water, wastewater treatment plant berm, which you did, so thank you. Two, two comments. One is that, in his comments, Mr. Bowman mentioned, just in passing, that it's the 100-foot flood level that we were protecting the wastewater treatment plant to. It's actually the 500-year, or 500-year flood, not foot flood, the 500-year flood level, because it's a critical infrastructure, and that's what's required for all of the federal grants and so forth, so that's one. Number two- Number two, comment was made about, we should wait until the new Director of Public Works comes on board, because this project depended heavily on Joe Michelangelo's knowledge and expertise. I would just like to submit that I have been aware of this project for a long time, and between Bill Hurley and Laura Pooley, they are up on this project. They are more than competent to give it oversight. So I think that was unfair. Joe, Joe's certainly a good engineer, but he's not the only one in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Just one clarification regarding knowledge of these projects. At the capital planning session, as you all know, but the public may not know, we put the next 10 years of projects out, and, and these projects are known to everybody because they're on that capital planning worksheet. Now, the increase in price is not known to everybody. That, that, that's new.
That's what he's.
That's the important part.
Yeah.
That's, that's the information we wish we had.
I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
All right, any further public comment?
Hi, I'm Michelle McCabe, and I live at 3845 Park Avenue. And this is because I should be better informed as a taxpayer, the first that I'm hearing of this project. But I want to say that I wish that there had been more discussion about why the town was doing this, because I was lucky enough to speak to, I'm so sorry, the, in the hall to find out, because that was not part of the discussion, and I was really interested in it. I think it's a great opportunity, given the fact that Fairfield, where we're located, and this issue of climate change and resiliency, to have an option that if the power goes out, will still protect our town and protect homeowners from sewage problems, protect Long Island Sound. Those are all really important things and worth the investment. But I, I wish that there had been a little bit more discussion so that maybe knowing a little bit more about the way that this is going to benefit the town for years to come, and how important it is to have a microgrid here would have been more of interest to inform the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, back to the board, are you ready to vote?
Yes. Yeah, before that, though, I'd like to address Ms. McCabe's mark. Just so the public knows, this project was thoroughly vetted over a year ago, when, when we originally appropriated it. All we're talking about tonight is the massive cost overruns. So, yeah, I mean, I, if I was new to the meeting, too, I'd look at you, be like you, like, wait, I don't even know what you're talking about. I get it, though, but just so you know, all the boards and commissions are frankly tired of talking about this project. We're just at the point now where we have to get it done, or we're going to lose all the state aid that we're relying on.
We've also had extensive conversations at our meetings about the microgrid as well, and the benefits.
All right. Are we ready to vote now?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Item, do we want to vote down item six, or do we want to just take no action on that?
Bob, Mayor, on your recommendation, we're going to be voting down item six now?
Yeah.
That item is moved and before us, if we're not going to make any changes, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, any comments from the public on item six? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no, I think you want to vote against it.
Gotcha.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. That item is voted down. Next up is the item 10, a private executive session on pending litigation with the town versus Julian, with our town attorney, Mr. Attorney Hoffman, and Attorney Lesser here. We'd ask everybody else to please leave the room and ask.